Good afternoon, welcome. I'm going to call this meeting to order the February 7th, 2023, 1:00 p.m., Board of County Commissioners for Citrus County. At this time, we're going to stand, if you're able, and remove your hats. We're going to have the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be done by Senior Pastor Kevin Ballard of the Calvary Chapel in Inverness, and the Pledge of Allegiance is by Senior Airman Greg Pelletier, and he was in the U.S. Air National Guard or Air Force, and he was in Iraqi Freedom from 2002 to 2003. So, thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Let us pray. Father, we stand here before you today, first of all, to give you our gratitude that you've put breath in our lungs, to give us another day to enjoy the beautiful weather that you've given us, to allow us to live in the greatest nation on the planet, the greatest state of the Union, and this great county that we call Citrus, and our home. And, Lord, we thank you for our Commissioners that have been elected to represent the needs and to work together to come up with the solutions for the many issues that will come before them. So with that in mind, we invoke your name and we ask for the wisdom that you willingly and generously give to all those who call upon you. We ask that you do that for them. As they listen to the issues and complex issues that come before them, speak to their heart, give them a listening ear, so they can do what is right before you and what is best for the citizens of this county. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greg, thank you, and thank you for sitting on the Board of the Veterans Advisory Board with us. We really appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Pastor. Well, Board, good afternoon. It's good to see everyone. We got a lot on the list today, and at this time, I'd like to have the clerk do the roll call for us, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners, the 7th day of February 2023. And attendance are Chair Ruthie Seba, First Vice Chair Holly Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Commissioners Jeff Kennard, Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Timmell.
Thank you. Board, I'm going to be looking for approval of the agenda, but I have two items that I would like to add. I would like to move Betts Farm, item M1, before regular business, so that Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Astari doesn't have to sit here through the whole meeting. And also, I would like to add a time certain at 3:00 p.m. for a presentation by the Hospital Board related to the Bakerac facility.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would also ask, I apologize for getting to you so late, but I would also ask that we modify my item on L2, so that we're not just having yet another discussion. I would like to see this board start moving forward. If it's the desire of the Board, I'd like to see some action on it. So, I would make a motion with that we approve the agenda with the two items that you mentioned, as well as the modification to my agenda item L2.
I'll second. And then, before you make that motion, and second, I know Mr. Howard has some additions also, so...
Yes, thank you. Additional information for Betts Farm M1, Betts Farm Property Addendum to the Contract, Report of Geotechnical Engineering Evaluation of Betts Farm and MAP, M1B, Betts Farm Questions, M1C, Betts Farm Correction to the Contract Date, M1D, Betts Farm Recommended Action Corrected. Also, H1A, SV22-02 Vacant Portion of Roadway, additional information came in on that. Additional items set for public hearings, B11, Set a Public Hearing on an Ordinance for Historic Preservation, B12, Set a Public Hearing on an Ordinance for Historical Resource Advisory Board.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennard, are you...
I would modify my motion to include those.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Finnegan?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any other Board discussion about the approval of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay, that passes 4-1. Okay. Consent agenda. Board, would you like to approve the consent agenda in its entirety, including the additions of B11 and B12, or would you like to take it item by item?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Kennard, with the addition of B11 and B12, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Finnegan, any other public comment? Any Board comment? Excuse me. Is there any public comment at this time regarding item B, Consent Agenda? Seeing none, Board, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That passes 4-1. Thank you. Item C, Proclamations. We have a proclamation for Heart Healthy Awareness Month. I'm looking for a motion to accept item C proclamation.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan, and second by Commissioner Bays, is there any further Board discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, right now, we have 4-0. We'll wait for Commissioner Davis. Thank you. Almost forgot your name, and it's Davis.
Sorry.
Okay, so...
My glass malfunctioned.
Board, please, join us up front for this proclamation. Thank you.
The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, proclamation to Heart Health Awareness Month, whereas heart disease is the greatest health threat to Americans and the leading cause of death worldwide, and whereas more than 523 million Americans suffer from one or more forms of cardiovascular disease, including high blood pressure, coronary disease, heart disease, congestive heart failure, stroke, congenital heart defects that can lead to heart disease, and whereas by adopting a healthy lifestyle that includes good eating habits, being physically active, not smoking, getting enough sleep, reducing stress, getting regular checkups, individuals can significantly reduce the onset and burden of heart disease. And whereas February has been declared America Heart Month, we encourage all citizens to join in the fight against heart disease and to learn how to prevent it. And now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, is hereby proclaim February 2023 as HCA Florida Citrus Hospital Heart Health Awareness Month in Citrus County. And in doing so, encourage citizens to learn more about cardiovascular disease, risk factors, warning signs, and life-saving emergency response techniques by joining the HCA Florida Citrus Hospital to celebrate Heart Health Awareness Month, signed by all five county Commissioners.
Thank you. [applause] Hello, I'm Lisa Nuneal. I'm the CEO of HCA Florida Citrus Hospital. I would just like to thank the Commission for this Declaration of Heart Healthy Month. As we know, heart disease is still the number-one killer of all Americans, and really across the world. So, this is a great month. We think about Valentine's Day, we think about our hearts. It's a good time for us to all think about improving our heart-healthy habits. It doesn't have to be everything all at once. It could just be one little step forward towards your health, whether it's taking a walk every day, or maybe not eating as much ice cream as I do, or thinking about those heart-healthy things. But every little step forward that you take to your health will protect you, and your heart will serve you well along and well for that. So, thank you very much, and my thanks to the Commission. I really appreciate this. Thank you. [applause]
Madam Chair? Yes. Did you set a time for the presentation? Yes, I asked for time certain for 3:00 p.m. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have open to the public. If anyone would like to address the Board, please step forward. Make sure you fill out a green card. I ask that you give your name and where you live, and if you are just speaking on your own behalf, you have three minutes. If you're registered as a group, you will have five minutes to speak, and all comments should be directed to me, the Chairman. Thank you. First speaker, please.
Well, this is going to be hard.
You just stand right there at the microphone?
Yes, ma'am. My sister's name is Karen, and I'm Gail, and about solutions, so...
And your last name, Gail?
Gail Romidi.
And where do you live?
I live, my, I use my dad's as my official address, and I'm a nomad in Citrus County. I rent a shed where I keep my industrial sewing machines. It's a 30-foot shed, and I'm terrified.
Don't worry, and you have three minutes, so...
Okay, just shaking off the nerves. So, I want to give you this.
Ma'am, ma'am, we don't...
Okay, so, what I'd like to talk about is my proposition to law that is actually being stolen out of my mailbox. I've had people mail it to me, and I actually have some great circumstantial proof from a gentleman who sent me a little love note, and it caused an incantation where they actually said they couldn't forward to where it was ever going to be reviewed at. Anyhow, enough of that. So, what I want to talk about is, I believe we're in a 50-year academic war against literacy, and that we need to reinstate the Federal Commissioner of Education that was repealed in 1972 when the FBI actually opened their behavioral...
Could you speak into the microphone so that they could hear you?
Okay.
You're fine, just, you've got a minute and a half left, so...
Okay, so, real quick, our 13th and 4th Amendments are being violated, our 13th by enslaving us as data objects without compensation, and 4th by stealing our intellectual property. We can't say poo without them trying to sell us a bag of it. So, microwave broadband, I'm wearing a hat that is, has EMF-blocking material in it, just like my scarf. I suffer from migraines, confusion, restless-like syndrome. I hate to talk about myself. Phew! So, anyhow, but these are wonderful, and I'd love to build a factory. I have concepts about a makers' community to fix this broken Silk Road. So, I think I already told you I have two U.S. utility patents. I've never been in trouble with the law. I have two college-educated children, one serving the Navy, one making me grandbabies. And he lives inside a town called Camelot, inside Washington, D.C. Beltway, and they're good citizens, and I care about the country. It's a mess. And I don't, I'll be back next month to speak about my solutions, but you've got my document that it's horrifying what's going on in America today.
Yes, thank you, Gail. I appreciate that.
Oh, yeah. I, by the way...
Your three minutes, I'm sorry, Gail, your three minutes is up.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming here.
I'll leave it there, then the real crazy comes out. You don't want to know the real truth.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I think they already know the real crazy.
I was going to say, that's a segue? Is it a segue? No.
I think she was helping me out there.
Teasing, kidding, I'm kidding.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm actually here today because I would like to request the opportunity to do...
Your name, please.
I'm sorry. Sabrina Watson-Lacanto, Florida. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Exceptional Life Project today, so if I could have my five minutes, that would be wonderful.
There you go.
Although I don't think I actually need all of it. I really actually would like to request today the opportunity to be able to do a presentation at one of the Board of County Commissioner meetings. I would like to be placed on the agenda. I still have concerns over our waterway situation and what appeared to be some kind of a backdoor deal or private meeting, and I don't feel like the Commissioners actually received legitimate viable information in that meeting, based on the packet that I received. I've gone through, partially gone through, the list that I received from Mark Edwards of all these chemicals that we are literally dumping into open water that we're claiming are safe. So, for example, Flumagard states, right, these are off their labels. They're very toxic to aquatic life with long-lasting effects, reproductive toxicity, hazardous to the aquatic environment, short-term and long-term. Practically non-toxic, I don't know what practically non-toxics actually mean. Does that mean like we just kill a couple of them, but maybe not all of them? Nice big hazards to humans and domestic animals also on that one. Aquithal talks about toxic by inhalation. These people are out here spraying this stuff, so they breathe it in, and it's toxic. The list for that goes on with ecotoxicity in mallard ducks, bluegill sunfish, rainbow trout, sheep's head minnow, eastern oyster. When we look at Element 3A, it says specific target organ toxicity, single exposure, acute toxicity to fish, Polaris, environmental precautions, prevent material from entering public sewer systems or any waterway. So, how do we define any waterway? So, do our lakes, are they classified as any waterway? Actually, there's several of those in here like that, about three of them. We there, we have acute toxicity oral, specific target organ toxicity, acute aquatic toxicity, chronic aquatic toxicity. They have a big signal word on here called danger. May cause damage to organs, livers, and kidneys, which is what Brian Nemeth, the marine scientist in Levy County, claims is killing our manatees, actually. This one also states, prevent material from entering public sewer systems or any waterways. I think we need to define any waterways. So, is a waterway a puddle at my property, or is a waterway a lake where we're actually dispensing these chemicals? Tribune states methods and materials for containment and cleanup. Again, no entering sewage or draining systems or any body of water. Hazard statements state toxic, if inhaled, may cause damage to organs through prolonged or repeated exposure. And rodeo, which is 54% glyphosate, it says it's practically non-toxic. Again, does that just kill a couple people, or a few birds, few fish? Glyphosate is known for liver and kidney damage. It's a risk for pregnant women and children, and these lakes, we actually have people that live in the county that swim in these lakes. Interestingly enough, when I asked Mark Edwards for the list, he sent me a, what he said claimed to be a complete list. In fact, his words are, yes, the list is complete, I provided, but on their very own spray sheets and schedules, 24D is on here. It was not on the list I received. Why? But more importantly, 24D, most people need to know, was a component in Agent Orange. So, when I reached back out to Mark Edwards about 24D, he said to me, you may want to reach out to Dr. Farrell to better understand the Agent Orange issue. Why would I do that? I mean, either it kills people or it doesn't. Either it causes cancer or it doesn't. Either it was an ingredient in Agent Orange or it wasn't. So, anyway, I think, like I said, I believe that maybe the Commissioners did not get all of the information that they needed, but it's, the public certainly needs this information. I mean, this is a discussion that absolutely has to happen in our county way, or in our county. We're dumping millions of dollars of these pollutants in our waterways. We've got fish floating upside down, we've got mud, mud islands floating on the waterways out there, right out there in Lake Hernando. We've got birds dying all over the place out there in Lake Hernando, and the wildlife is disappearing. So, again, I am requesting the ability to bring a presentation to the Board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm still Joe Leacy, retired structural engineer, with a few questions on the animal shelter. I had the honor, and I'm using that term in its loosest sense, of watching the December 13th Commissioners meeting when Bo Toquay presented their absurd proposal of $22 million for a new animal shelter. Everyone knew the budget was $9 million going in. It was what Commissioner Davis would later call absolutely the worst presentation she had ever witnessed, and I wholeheartedly agree. I questioned at the last meeting as to why the Bacon Group in Clearwater, a subject matter expert in animal shelter design, was not contacted. Commissioner Schlebach said they were contacted, but she didn't know what happened with them. I can tell you for a fact that the Bacon Group did present to the Board a proposal for a 33,000-square-foot facility at a cost of $11.5 million, a proposal that's looking better and better all the time. Question one, is the Bacon Group now in play, or are you solely looking at the Toquay Group going forward? Next, my research found that on the April 21st, 2022 Board Meeting, request for quote, RFQ 21-119, was voted aye by Commissioners Schlebach, Davis, and Kennard to appropriate the sum of $986,727 for what Commissioner Schlebach called a soup-to-nuts effort to provide a new animal shelter. Question two, do Commissioners Schlebach, Davis, and Kennard now have any regrets or second thoughts about that aye vote, given Toquay's performance to date? Next, my question was about the Duke Energy Training Facility that's abandoned and for sale. I'm still not clear, is that option on the table or not? Finally, I have a solution to consider. The Bacon Group's proposal was for $11.5 million for a 33,000-square-foot facility. When you run the numbers, that's $348 a square foot. Go back to the Bacon Group, tell them you want a 28,000-square-foot facility. When you run the numbers of $348 per square foot for a 28,000-square-foot facility, the price tag becomes, wait for it, $9 million. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Next speaker, please. No clapping, please, even though I love that $9 million number. Thank you. Your name, please, and where your...
Deb Spence, Crystal River.
Thank you.
I'm here today to talk about rights. The Declaration of Independence states that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain uninalitable lights, among these, a life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We hear a lot in this chamber about the rights, particularly parental rights, but it means that we're not all equal if parents have more rights than taxpayers. What we don't hear anything about here is responsibilities and obligations. Last week, there's a lot of news about an abuse case in Floris City, so I asked, what is meant by parental rights in this? Technically, yes, parents have the rights. But kids should have a loving home environment. How did this case go on for so long, under the nose of school administrators and school resource officers? The blessing program that provides backpacks for food for children in public schools provides 1,900 backpacks a week, 1,900 kids who have food insecurities every day in this county. What about parental responsibilities here? Teachers are providing snacks out of their own pockets for students who are hungry during classes. Where are the parental obligations to feed and nourish their children? An organization I belong to provided Christmas gifts for kids at the Homosassa Elementary School. My wife and I picked up three tickets for Christmas presents, and the request was for underwear and socks. This is what kids are asking for in this county. So, I have to go back to parental rights, but no obligations or responsibilities. Last week, a mother wrote to next-door neighbor asking what parents are using for homeschool curriculum as she feels the need to pull her kids out of the infamous middle school. The reason? Kids are selling vape pens, and the amount of sex between middle school students is harassing the other students. Trust me when I say that the library display has not sexualized middle school students into heterosexual sex. Middle schools, 13-year-old kids are having sex, and yet last week, it was all about a library display. Commissioner Bays made a comment last week about video games, which I really wish had received a lot more publication. She also commented on parents being parents, which to me means less about rights and more about responsibilities and obligations. Saying that parents have more rights than others, and that both have more rights than taxpayers, is a slippery slope, if not combined with responsibilities and obligations. This county is a culture of have and have-nots. Homeless numbers are increasing, families are living in cars, drug abuse, child abuse, students living in poverty, and yet we continue to build million-dollar houses and talk about litter so that we don't have to rattle the base. Someone in Sugar Mill commented last week about traffic barrels on 19 and how ugly they looked. There's a lot more ugly in Citrus County than barrels and litter, and you and I both know that the real ugly will never be talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners.
Your name, please.
My name is Joshua Hicks.
Thank you.
I am the owner of Handy Hicks Corp. in Homosassa, and the president of the Skill Building Class Incorporated, which teaches 30 students a year, 10 to 17, how to be resourceful, give them some learned education, life skills, skill-building classes. I wanted to come here to personally thank our new county administrator, Steve Howard, for taking the time to write me a thank-you letter, for coming over and doing some handyman work. That dedication to the community is a direct realization of how we're on the brink of new waters that will take us with that mindset, to take time to do that, for those details to cross your t's and dot your i's. It's an overwhelming joyous feeling to have that handwritten letter, you know, that's from the county administrator. On that same note, I wanted to give you a quick annual review of our skill-building class for the year. To date, we have, as a community, about 30 volunteer, community leaders, and business owners who volunteer their time to come in and teach these youth. As you heard today, the reality of what we're facing, it's severe. We are on the brink of new change. It's unfolding and will unfold. Getting ahead of that, I choose to do something about it personally, and I encourage anybody out there to step up and do something in their own way, because that's how things get done. So, you do it, you see the need, and it doesn't need to come from you, it needs to come from us, and that's where it comes from. I don't rely on Facebook or social media to see this, what I'm doing, I come here and tell you, because I'm confident, and that's what I teach these, instill the knowledge of confidence on the youth, because as adults are slipping, we need to understand, we don't need to let the youth slip. Thank you very much for all your dedication. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please. If there's no other speakers, I am going to close open to the public, and at this time, I'm going to move M1, Betts Farm, to the forefront before our regular business Board, if you can go on, and this would be Commissioner Bays's item. I'm going to turn it over to you, Commissioner Bays.
Are we going to respond to your open?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm so sorry. We've got two minutes to respond. Thank you. Okay, rewind. We're going to respond to the open to public if you would like to. Would anybody like to respond to the comments and questions?
I will.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
I just want to say, Mr. Hicks, you absolutely, where did you go? You're in here somewhere. There you are. You absolutely nailed it. I quickly learned on this job, I joked to my family that I'm one of the five most hated people in the county, because people just bring lots of issues to us, some of the things we can do something about, some we can't, but it is really helpful, I'm very much a team-oriented person, it's really helpful if the community gets involved with solutions and help, because Deb Spence also nailed it. We have a serious poverty issue. Fortunately, it is childhood poverty. Fortunately, it's trending in the right direction, but it's still about 1 in 4 children in this county. It's not free and reduced lunch, it's worse than that, it's full-on poverty. So, that's a real situation, and so the more we all think about helping kids read, that helps keep them out of poverty later, and help them read, get them food to eat, experiences, things like that, and get involved on a positive basis, the more we're going to move this county forward, because Mr. Hicks is also right, great things lie ahead. So, we're trending... So we're trending in the right direction. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to thank Deb Spence for all of her comments. I think she did nail it on the head. We have such an issue, not only in Citrus County, but in our nation, and our middle schools are declining, and the age just gets younger and younger. I do want to say, but the other things, like the lady complaining about the barrels or litter, those are important, too. And I spent the first part of my life, pretty much my entire adult life, working to help and solve some of the issues that you were talking about, abuse and childhood neglect, and helping families and strengthening them. But you know, now we're county government, and I'm a part of that, so we have to address all the other issues, too. But I think it's so important, what you bring up. I hope everybody here listens to your words and finds one thing, if it's just one thing, to help, whether that's help a local nonprofit that's helping with those issues, mentoring kids, neighbors' kids, just knowing that our youth need help. So thank you for highlighting all that today.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennard, anything?
Deb Spence and Josh Hicks, well done. And Mr. Lacy, I think is the last name. I don't yet regret my vote on selecting our current consultant, and I don't know how we went from the budgeted $9 million to a presentation of a $22 million facility, but I am hoping they heard the message loud and clear and come back with a $9 million facility.
Thank you. Anybody else? You're good?
I feel disrespectful that I didn't answer Mr. Lacy. I forgot that.
I've got it.
Okay.
Okay, Gail, it's funny that you would, funny and not in a strange way, not in a ha-ha way. I was thinking this morning, when I was doing my devotions, how this country is, what direction this country is going in, and it breaks my heart. And you know, that plays into what Sabrina Watson was saying, and how I feel about our waterways and protecting them from chemicals. And you know, Deb Spence, I mean, Mr. Hicks, all of us, if that doesn't show, both parties trying to work together, we're all talking about the same issues, and it really brings me joy and helps me have hope that we want to make sure, this is a bipartisan thing, that our waters are clean, that our children are protected and fed, and that the people are held accountable in abuse situations and even in litter situations. And you know, Mr. Hicks and what Deb Spence does as far as with the youth, and helping our youth, and teaching our youth the trades, a trade that some are dying out when some of these subcontractors and craftsmen, when they go, these certain framers or woodworkers or tile setters, when they're gone, some of those trades will be lost to the level that these people do them. So you guys all gave me a little bit of hope today, and I was, you know, this morning, a little concerned about our country. As far as the animal shelter, Joe, there was an RFQ, Bacon Group was part of that, and they were not chosen during that. The Commissioners do not choose the RFQ, and I was going to ask our county attorney, if you could explain the RFQ process for the audience and how that's done, because the Bacon Group was part of that. So, putting you on the spot, but could you give us a little synopsis of the RFQ?
When you're going out for a service, an RFQ is certain professionals, there's a statute that provides for certain professionals have to be procured in a certain manner, which is the request for qualifications. During that process, you're not to discuss price with them, you're simply to look at their qualifications. In the case of the animal shelter, I understand that we, there was separate individual scorers on staff for those proposals that were sent in. They were ranked individually by these scorers. Once the scorers came up with the top several, I can't remember whether it was two or three, when the top two or three were chosen, they actually were brought in for in-person presentations to those scorers, and then those scorers ranked them. That ranking was submitted to the board, and the board does accept the final ranking of them, so the board does participate in the process to the extent that the board agrees with the total ranking. And whoever the highest-ranked firm or individual is, that's who negotiations begin with. And that was the Tokai. I may be saying that the wrong way, but...
Thank you. And so that's why Bacon Group wasn't part of that. Are you done? Is there more?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think I said that name wrong.
You had a lot of words. It's okay.
I said too many words?
You had a lot of words there, but that's okay. I just want a little synopsis.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
No more words?
No more words.
Thank you. We've got to move on, we've got a lot, I've got a time certain, I've got an M1, I've got to keep going. So you know, do I have any regrets? Do I, I might have some reservations, but regrets, not yet. They have a chance to come back and redeem themselves, and we've been very clear with a $9 million mark. Two and a half years ago, I went through and figured out how many square feet at $350 a square foot, and that was two and a half years ago, before COVID and everything, and I was like, we can do this for this, you know, $9 million. So I was more than surprised with the $22 million. Don't understand that, but they'll have a chance to redeem themselves if they come back and give us a very good presentation and a $9 million shelter. I think all of us will be happy to move on with that. So I hope that answers some of your questions. I'd be happy to meet with any of you later and talk, dig deeper on some of these issues you have, but I do appreciate you taking the time to be here, taking your time from your job to come and sit and listen to us and give us suggestions in the Open to the Public. So thank you. So now, I'm going to close Open to the Public and go to M1. We do have a time certain, but since I called on Commissioner Bays first, if you're ready for that, go ahead.
Sure. In January, the Betts Farm was brought back to the county commission, and at that time, it was agreed that we would, that it would, the contract would be extended for three months at $10,000 a month. The applicant has now asked for a reconsideration for the $30,000 to be applied towards a $40,000 conceptual permit with Swift Mud, which would be, that would alter our motion, that we would need to have some discussion. I think I'm going to ask our county administrator to bring us up to date, because I know he's had some conversations.
I have, actually, actually, the last couple days, even this morning. I know the prospective buyer is in the audience, and he's prepared to talk to this board. But you know, some of the deliverables they talked about was applying for this conceptual permit through Swift Mud. It's my understanding that he's working, wanting to work through that process. There was a geotechnical study that was completed. I did review that today, the summary, not the full document, also a conceptual on that property as well. So those are all things that he stated that they would bring forward at some point, if in fact, he could not get to close. But I think it's most appropriate, since he's in the audience, if you have specific questions for him to tell you where he's at in this process, would I think be very helpful to this board.
Would you like him to come forward?
Yes, could you please come forward? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stari.
Yes, hello, everyone. Chair, Commissioners. It's an honor to be here, and yes, I can answer any questions you have.
Can you tell us to date what you have performed?
Yeah, we have, like Administrator Howard said, we have performed the geotechnical engineering on the thing, which was extremely important, to find out whether this is a doable project or not. That was the first thing that we did. And then, you know, we studied as, you know, basically, I'm a drainage engineer myself, you know, so to make sure this is, to solve this riddle, basically, you know, the Betts Farm is pretty much all in the floodplain. So when you first look at it, you know, it's like, okay, how can you do this? And so, you know, being a drainage engineer, I figured out the solution to it, which somehow I'm keeping close to the vest now, but I showed it to Mr. Howard today, that what the solution is. And I already have had a pre-application meeting with Swift Mud, and they are amenable to that solution, you know. But now the investors, the would-be investors, in this type of a marketplace, they don't just take my word for it. They really want to see that Swift Mud actually approves that, you know, before they, you know, they commit to it. But given the location of the site and what we're proposing, you know, it's a very desirable site. And like Mr. Howard said, you know, like, once we're done with it, if for some reason we cannot close on it, then you have something that is worth a lot more than it is today, because then everybody can see that, yeah, this is a viable solution. It will be a beautiful project with nice amenities, parks, lakes, all sorts of stuff. So...
Thank you. Commissioner Bays, you have the floor.
So the geotechnical report and this conceptual permit, will those become the property of the county, whether you close or you don't?
Yes, ma'am.
And how long is it going to take for this conceptual permit?
I'm estimating three months, you know, and usually, basically, when you submit to Swift Mud in Southwest Florida Water Management District, it takes 30 days for them to review something. And, you know, I've had experiences with them, you know, working for the past 30 years with Swift Mud and getting all sorts of permits for different venues, and you know, some things go a little bit faster than others. But this is, you know, since we've already had the pre-application meeting and everything like that, I think that, yeah, the 90 days would be totally doable.
And when did you start that process?
I have, I already have had the pre-application meeting the last year, in, I believe it was like November, I had that with them. And so I'm just waiting for the extension, if it was given to me, so that we can actually just, you know, prepare the plans and submit to them, you know. So it would take, it would take me about three weeks to compile the plans and the application form, and then, you know, for them, 30-day review, if they have any comments and so forth, and then we'll respond to their comments, like that.
Was there a preemption for you to have done that at an earlier timeframe, in order to be in line with your contract?
Yes and no. And the reason for that is just that, you know, when they, I had a major home builder backing me on this, and when the interest rates went up, and they started having to discount their homes for sale and everything like that, they started walking away from a bunch of projects. But they told me that, you know, to convince, you know, their board of directors to stay on something like this, they couldn't wait for me to go and get the permits. They, you know, they wanted to have the permit in hand before they could commit. You know, so at that point, you know, not having that backing, and you know, I'm involved in another major project in the county, and I didn't really want to spread myself too thin, you know, just spending out of my own pocket, you know, without knowing whether I would be able to finish it on time or not. You know, so that's where we are.
So you asked for the extension, I mean, you knew the contract, that it was up for renewal in December.
Yes.
Did you start this process in December?
Well, the start, to some degree, yes.
The pre-application?
Yeah, there was a, no, I have not applied for the pre-application, because then you have to pay the fee and everything like that, and prepare all the engineering documents. But being a civil engineer myself, I have already done the calculations and everything, you know, so I'm kind of like ahead of the game, you know, that once I get the go-ahead, then I can prepare the rest of the documents, because I have to pay for some sort of, you know, like the preparation of the actual physical plans, a set of plans, and the permit fees and everything like that to go to Swift Mud. So I held back on that, just to see if I would be approved for this or not.
Mr. Howard, help me out here. I believe that what we agreed to in January, the three months would be up in April. If we're not at that level now, three months, the clock would almost need to start now, is that correct?
Yes, I would think so, yes.
So really, what you're asking for is...
Sounds like 90 days from today.
90 days from today.
Did we say that?
That's why, I think that's how I would do the math.
That's all my questions for now.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Bays, you had, you were going to ask about the wetlands delineation.
The report?
The survey?
Yes. So that was the survey that was done by...
There were core borings done, a geotech?
Yes.
And there was also a statement that the wetlands delineation was done?
Yes, that's what I'm asking. So the other report that was actually prepared by Laner or Lin...
Whatever it is.
Lanar.
Yes.
Would that report be turned over to us as well?
Yes, we'll turn over everything, everything that we have done, basically.
Right.
Including, including the complete layout of, you know, where the ponds will be, and as I showed Mr. Howard, you know, the plan is just to pretty much stay away from all the wetlands. There's hardly any wetland impacts the way we're proposing it, except for just some areas where you just have to, you know, because there have to be roads and whatever, you know. So I would say, out of all the wetlands that are out there, less than 4% of the wetlands would get impacted. And when we talked with Swift Mud, the pre-application meeting, they had no problem with that whatsoever. The main issue in here is the floodplain impact, and how do you build that and permit it, you know, through the water management?
But the wetlands report would come to us.
Everything will come to you, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I just want to add a little bit of historical perspective to this. I don't recall if Commissioner Schlebach, if you and Commissioner Davis were on the board at the time when we put this property up for sale. And at that time, I argued that we should not be listing it as-is, that the county should proceed with doing the engineering work first, so that prospective buyers would know exactly what they were getting, what they would be able to put on that property, and could take out the inherent risk of a buyer moving into this and not really knowing what they would be willing to pay for. If we do the engineering first, if we get these studies done, if we've got all this stuff in hand, then we list it for sale, and things move more smoothly along than, obviously, than what they have. I didn't have the support on the board at the time to invest some money in the engineering to get it done, but this is what we're facing now, is that these things take time. I am on board with the 90-day extension in exchange for the documents that he's putting together. Had the board at that time agreed to what I was suggesting that we do, it would have cost us that much money to get this stuff done, whether we were doing it in-house or hiring outside professionals to do it. Is it ideal? No, it's not ideal, but I think ultimately, as long as he's continuing to invest his own money into this project, trying to move this thing forward, I believe that it's worthwhile for the county to give him the 90 days, and hopefully, he can get this project across the line.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kennard, we were not on the board, and that was brilliant of you to come up with all that, because you can see that the situation we're in, and you missed the meeting where we went round and round with this. So I'm in support of this. This is something that I made a motion for January 10th, and I'm going to support it again today. I understand the situation you've been put in, but what I really like about this project is someone that is considering the land and the wetlands, and being a good steward of the land, and not just coming and raping and pillaging the land and leaving us with a mess. So I appreciate your due diligence. I know this is a rough road, but I hope that you can get this to the finish line, and again, I'm going to support what Commissioner Bays has brought forward. So that's where I stand. Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you. Hi, how are you?
Hello, thank you.
I just want to clarify, because I think we're...
I just want to clarify, because I think we're, the motion on the table is to give you the extension in exchange for these documents, and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with the documents. So, and you may have some updated information for me. So, not my field of study, I learned that the geotechnical study was actually the boring samples, is that correct?
That's right, yeah. Standard penetration tests, to be exact, SPTs.
And it's my understanding that that study is in the name of Lennar. So do you actually have the rights to that and have the report to turn over to the county?
Well, I don't have the, the, the report yet, but I am friendly with the Lennar folks. And basically, what they told me was just that, you know, they will work with me. I, I sent an email to the geotech yesterday, and I haven't heard back from them. But basically, what it is, is just that the, the study has been done. So for, you know, according to what Lennar told me, for a few hundred dollars, they will just take Lennar's name off of it, and they put my name on the report. And because they've already done the work and everything, they just have it. So, so, yes, we should be able to have the report.
Okay. My second question is, and I'm just looking at what your, your, I think this information came from your broker. It says that you have that, it said that you have a survey, including the wetlands delineation, and I think Commissioner Bays had alluded to that. But I think what I got from staff is that you, you didn't do a wetlands delineation.
Not an, not an exact wetland delineation. So basically, I have my environmental scientist, a gentleman named Chris Daly, that I've worked with for years and years. So, you know, when Chris looks at aerial photos of something, he can pretty much see where the wetlands are. So then, he went and he spent the whole day, you know, he and his dog, basically, you know, walking around the property and stuff, and he verified those lines, and some of the points he put in his GPS, you know, and everything. So they, and, and the fact is, so, so we don't have the, every single line surveyed and everything like that. That would come later. But the fact is just that we're leaving all the wetlands alone, for the most part, and the 30-foot buffer that is required. And when we showed that to Swift Mud, you know, they were happy with that, because they said that, okay, well, I mean, it's called avoidance and minimization, and we're totally avoiding as much as we can and minimizing the impacts to, you know, to, to a total minimum, you know. So that, that is not the issue in, in this picture at all, really. It's the other part, it's the, it's the actual, you know, building in the floodplain and the, and the water management for the thing, you know. So when the storm comes, where the water will go and so forth.
So, so my concern is, and it, and it sounds like you're working on everything, and I understand the need for more time, but as a board, for the extension, it's to get all of these documents, right? The geotechnical study, the wetlands delineation, and the full development site plan, including drainage, which you had the pre-app meeting for that, correct?
Yes.
So at this time, I'm just not sure that we're getting anything, because you don't, you don't have the geotechnical study, you don't have the wetlands delineation, and you don't have the drainage. So I'm wondering if somehow we can, maybe Mr. Howard could see some of these things at some point? You said you could get them easily. That's just my concern, that we would extend to get these things in the future, but you don't have these things to give us.
Well, I showed Mr. Howard basically what we have, you know, I showed him the solution to the, to the riddle.
Mr. Estari, excuse me. Mr. Howard, could you answer Commissioner Finnegan?
Yeah, I think, you know, what he's indicated is, you know, some of these studies aren't complete. I mean, definitely what I looked at was the summary, the geotechnical report. He's indicated that he's gonna be able to get that to us, we'd have that full report. That's what he's indicating. And he has not applied for that conceptual, which is obviously gonna be at a later date when you get that. I did look at a conceptual plan, I mean, I did look at that and looked at his solution. Is that the solution? I'm not a PE, he's a PE, I'm just, I mean, I did see documentation. So, but that I can confirm.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bays?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry.
It's all right, my chair is all squeaky.
I need to have my coffee.
Forget about it.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I am, I, I too think Commissioner Cannard was brilliant in abstention before we were here.
Can you say that again?
That's our, that's our pet word.
Say that to you, anyway. So, and this is what I seconded in January, so I'll, I'll absolutely be supporting it. I would also remind everyone that we, not, not just the documents, we already have 100,000 of his money. So, you know, the county, the, the citizens should know that we are minding things well here, and I do believe you're gonna be successful, and, and we are really grateful that you're looking at this property with such caretaking for the community and for the environment, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bays?
Will this be the last thing that you need before you can close on the contract?
I believe so, yeah, so, and, and to be honest with you, the, I haven't been in, a, a design engineer for about six years now, you know, and, and from talking to my friends, the permitting environment has changed, you know, since COVID. And there is some stuff that happened, you know, during the, you know, previous, the Trump administration, with some sort of a delegation of the Army Corps of Engineers going to the DEP and everything, that kind of like gummed up the permitting process at the state level. So the, I am, I, I, I believe that, you know, what I'm asking Swift Mud and my conversation with them, that 90 days is sufficient to get a real answer from them. But if I come here 90 days from now and say, look, you know, they are, you know, everything is in the process, and they need another two weeks or, or something, you know, that may happen, to be honest with you.
What I'm asking is, there's nothing else that you're going to need to make application for, other than this? It's, it's strictly, and would be at the?
Yes.
Time limits of Swift Mud and being able to perform this?
Absolutely, yes, that's all there is. Yeah, I, I, I believe that I have the solution, and I actually ran the solution by Swift Mud engineers in the pre-application meeting, and they totally agreed with me. And they liked the fact that we were avoiding the wetland impacts, because, you know, like Commissioner Schlaiba said, I, my heart is with the environment as well. I would like to, to, to keep the environment as clean as possible. And even in the plan that I showed Mr. Howard, you know, we have park spaces, open spaces, you know. I, I believe in, in development in a way that is walkable, that people can enjoy it, and parks for kids to play. And this is a huge piece of property, it's 360 acres almost, and all that we're gonna do is, is built on around 190 to 200 acres of it. So like about 150, 60 acres, just gonna be open space and wetlands and parks and, and lakes and so forth.
Thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Davis had one more thing.
I just want to make one final comment. I'll support this, but what I'm really banking on is at the end of, if we're going to extend this now for 30 or 90 days, that we're gonna look forward to you closing on your contract, and that we don't, we're not back at the table again for something. I understand if it's Swift Mud and you can't, and that's it, but not to come back to us and say, I have to file for something else. So I, I'll support this, but I really, I want to be at the closing table in 90 days.
This is your time, I mean, is 90 days gonna be good enough to get what you need to get done?
I, I believe so, so.
Okay.
So.
Commissioner Davis?
Because, well, because Swift Mud isn't what you need to come to the table. You need Lennar or another developer to come to the table with you to close, correct?
That's right, yeah. Basically, so basically, once we have, once we have that, that stamp from Swift Mud, you know, then there are developers like Lennar that are interested. You know, so now, given that the economy doesn't go south on us, you know, or, or on them and, and, and whatnot, you know, given, if, if the atmosphere is the same as today or improved, then yeah, then for sure.
Okay.
But if.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think you, you're kind of repeating some of those things, and we do need to move on, and I don't mean to be rude to you by any means, but sometimes I think you might be digging a bigger hole each time you speak. And I want to encourage you to get this done, and I think by Commissioner Bays bringing this forward, she's helping you out, and you, she's telling you 90 days. So my suggestion is to listen to her and start ASAP with what you need to get done, if this motion goes through.
Commissioner Cannard?
At the end of 90 days, if Swift Mud has not been able to get it done, I would encourage you to come to the podium and lay, lay the blame squarely where it belongs. If they can't move the application through there in three months, I'd like to hear that.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, Madam Chair. With regard to the contract, I'm not certain whether the buyer is asking for an extension of a closing date or if he's asking for an extension of the due diligence period. So I was hoping maybe we could get that clarification, because the, the draft that's in your backup just simply says, the seller agrees to grant the buyer an additional 90-day extension. So I'm not sure whether we're extending the due diligence period, which is what I believed we had been doing all along, or whether we're just extending the closing date. Because if we're just doing the due diligence period at the end of 90 days, then there's still a period after that for closing.
Yes, Madam Attorney, you're right. So we're asking for the, for the extension to the due diligence. So after that point, then there is another 30 days for the closing. The, the closing documents have to be prepared and everything like that.
So if at the end of the 90 days, if the buyer determines that the property's not suitable for the buyer's use under the due diligence period, then the buyer can ask to cancel the contract and not close? Just want to make sure everyone's?
I understood that.
I'm good.
It's a long way around, but yes, that, I mean, that 90 days will have, you should be able to make a decision whether you're gonna move forward with the contract or not.
Okay. And we'll get Mr. Cunningham to prepare an addendum that says extension of the due diligence. Commissioner Bays, this is your item, what is your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion that we extend the due diligence period for 90 days from today's date.
I'll second.
Thank you, I have a motion by Commissioner Bays, a second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment? Thank you, sir, you can sit down.
Thank you so much, and I'm sorry for repeating myself.
No, I'm sorry.
As I get older, the more I get, then.
I just kind of was trying to help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, so. Okay, now, now, is there any public comment at this regarding M1? I have a motion by Commissioner Bays, a second by Commissioner Cannard. Seeing no public comment, is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, board all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That passes 5-0. Get to work, Mr. Estari, thank you. Okay, now we are going to our time certain, and we are, that will be item.
See you in 120 days with 6.5 million.
I think it's 6.6, isn't it? Okay, so we are now at, help me out, Mr. Howard, what, where are we at? H1.
Madam Chair.
Presentation and public hearings, yes, Commissioner Finnegan?
I would like to recuse myself from H1, and I will be filing the appropriate paperwork after this meeting.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Finnegan, you've got that, Madam Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, Joanna, is it, is it? The applicant, Mr. Stillwell?
Good afternoon, for the record, my name's Clark Stillwell. My professional address is 320 South Highway, 41 Brandon Bank Building here in Nemours, Florida. I represent the applicant, Stephen and Diane Finnegan. The Finnegans request a partial street vacation of approximately 2,666 square feet, irregularly shaped parcel from a plat of roadway south Blue Water Point, at the point where the road dead-ends into lots 1 and 2 of Blue Water Forest Platte, Platte Book 3, Page 95. The basic facts are as follows. The plat was filed in 1960. The county did not build these roads, there was no county investment in these roads. The plat predates the county's first zoning ordinance in 1976 by 16 years. The plat predates the county's first public works manual in 1982 by 22 years. The public works manual would have defined what was required of this plat, as far as roadway width and right-of-way and things like cul-de-sac. For a majority of the subdivision, the roadway is 50 feet wide. The pavement, in fact, is 20 feet, at the point we seek the vacation. At the point where we seek the vacation, the roadway has tapered from a 50-foot right-of-way to a 40-foot connection point. There is no cul-de-sac, as you would know it today, not, none was required. And frankly, there's no room for cul-de-sac, whether it was done in 1960 or done in 2023. Your current Citrus County Code in Chapter 7 at Page 782 defines what a cul-de-sac should look like. It is essentially a 40-foot radius from the point in the middle. Again, there is no room for such. The file to date, well, let me say this, the road is dedicated for ingress and egress. It's not dedicated for any other public use other than in ingress and egress and utilities. And in that regard, when you look at this, you should, the question is, is it providing ingress and egress, particularly safe ingress and egress? The file, in fact, documents not only from the applicant's history, but from recent letters from immediately abutting owners that there is a problem with this roadway and public access on this roadway, and the inability of these people to make, they come to the end of the road, they have to do what we all learned was the three-point turn, when we turned 16 and got a driver's license? Well, there's not room to do a three-point turn, turn down there. No fault of the owners, no fault of the county, it was done pre-code. Utility poles are such that they impair that ability to do that. So, and also, within the last 30 days, we've provided in your backup material examples of two incidents on this property where the applicant's personal property has been impacted by people outside of the right-of-way making turns into their private property. The current roadway, as it sits, is limited, and let me go back, the Finnegans own both lots, basic fact. Both 1 and 2. Current roadway is limited to the applicant's Finnegans and their guests. Any public use outside of that right-of-way is not legal. The area for the turnaround is impaired by the utility location. And I have checked into the amount of maintenance the county put into this roadway, and my determination is that the county's maintenance responsibility down there over the last 15 years is very, very limited. The road is, is what it is and has what it was when it was platted. The law is governed by Chapter 177.101 of the Florida statutes. There are two criteria, that the applicant owns the roadways that they're seeking on both sides, and that the, does not impair the right of other parties to access in that particular subdivision. In both cases, the applicant Finnegan meets the statutory criteria. I would point out that these are the only two statutory criteria that are listed. There are other items that will come up for discussion, but they're outside the framework of the statutory criteria. Your land development code has specific, in the traffic circulation element, has specific criteria. Under Policy 10.4.2, there are four criteria. One is that the request does not diminish access, and that's not gonna happen here. In the backup material, Finnegans have had to do a lot reconfiguration of Lot 1 and Lot 2 so that both lots in the future will have access to a platted roadway. The second criteria is that the proposed vacation does not impair any other access rights, and that's in fact true. There is a requirement that it does not deal with or impair the ability of the county in the future to put utilities, there's a utility easement in the backup material to cover that point, which will be signed and recorded. And the final thing is, you know, within another session of your comp plan, if the roadway were to provide access to public waters, the comp plan would absolutely prohibit the prohibition of the vacation, but in this particular case, that's not true, it provides access. It provides access to the lots. The waters are to the side. In your land development code, under Section 7330, you have further criteria, one that's consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And as I just identified, that's... We believe we meet those criteria. Your staff report reinforces that position. Basically, the second criteria is that it does not leave someone or take away their sole access rights. And that's not the case. Again, we did the lot reconfiguration. And the final point is that the roadway will or should is incapable being incorporated into the public road right-of-way system. It's a dead end. It can't be tied in with any other road. So we have met, if you will, the... All of the statutory, all of the plan, and all of the land development code criteria. There's some positives if you do this. One is, this 2,666 feet will go from basically a roadway to a taxable piece of property taxed at waterfront rates. In preparing for today's meeting, I'm cognizant of some of the public comments that have been made that the Finnegans are asking for you to give up free public property. And I think you need to put that in the proper context. First, the statutes allow this. Secondly, the statute does not require a dedication or payment of fee. Historically, in the late '70s and early '80s, the county used to do that. They used to say, hey, you want your street vacated? We've appraised it. You pay us the filing fee, and oh, by the way, pay us this sum of money. In '82, the county hired a young attorney from Hillsboro County, Mr. Larry Hague. Mr. Hague came onboard, took one look at that policy, and stopped it. His opinion at the time was it wasn't supported by the statute. And he had some other terms for it, but I'm not going to publicly disclose those terms. But again, he'd stop it. Today, we talk about giving away free property just for the privilege, just for the privilege of being here and potentially being approved or potentially being disapproved. The applicant has paid a $700 filing fee, $200 for an ONE report, $260 for advertising postage and that sort of thing, another $350 for the lot reconfiguration fee, plus the surveying work, and then me. And I'm probably the least. So, again, if you approve this, you end up with the property being added to the tax rolls. You take away a situation of people doing turns right in their front yard, and there's a way we can address that safety issue through this application. Do you have any questions? All I want to point out, look, let's just say, my client is a public figure. But I want you to know that I was hired in December of 2022 to start this, long before she got elected. And it just takes that long to these street vacations. Qualcomm, we were asked them six times for a letter. Six times, starting in February. And they didn't get it to us until October. And we can't come to a public hearing without all those letters in hand. So I want to just point that out for the benefit of the public. I also want to point out to you that we do these street vacations on a regular basis. I've done three this year already. No one asked me to donate money to the property for those three. No one said that we're giving away free property for those three. If you didn't do these street vacations, issues like you have in the town of Old Town of Homosassa and that original plat would come back and bite you because when they did that original plat down in Homosassa, and then when the county paid to replat it, there are houses in public streets that have been built historically. This is how you clean up those title issues. So, to conclude, I think we've met the legal tests, all of them. And I'm prepared to discuss. I have talked with the immediate neighbor. There's a letter he sent to... Did you get that passed out? Sent to you this morning, he's in favor. The next lot owner over says he's in favor. They all want to do the same thing. Well, that's something for the future. But what we can do here, commissioners, is we need to provide... It's a dead end, so we need to provide a way for them to turn around. Roadway's 50 feet, the pavement's 20. I mean, there's 30 feet where we can put in a 10-by-12 stubout 15, 20 feet off the vacate point. Instead of doing a three-point turn and potentially ending up in the canal, they can simply back out and back up that way. Very simple. It would add a major safety issue down there for sure because people drive down there sightseeing. And it would achieve the goals of security for my client's property.
Mr. Stillwell, I do not appreciate you stealing my thunder.
What?
I don't appreciate that at all.
What do I do now?
I just had three points, and one of them was, is there an area? Because I did go out there. I drove it. My car was able to make the turn, but I have a pretty tight... I can turn on a dime in that car.
We all know you have a Tesla.
Yeah, and it's amazing. So I'm just going to say I could make that turn. But that's German technology there that made that turn. But I did my due diligence. I understand it. And what was bothering me and what has bothered me is, you know, the mail deliveries. And what we have to look out for is public interest. And does... Would this affect the public interest? And if we... If there was a pad, and I was glad to hear you say that, I was thinking if there was a pad for the delivery truck or something to be able to back up into it and then go on their way. Otherwise, wouldn't the postal service say, you know, we're having difficulty, we're going to move all the mailboxes to the front of the development, which is, you know, might be more convenient anyway? And so that was something I was thinking. But you're saying that there is a possibility of getting... There's an area that we could get some kind of pad?
I've reviewed the surveys, okay? And again, 50 feet of right-of-way, 20 feet of pavement. The pavement is generally in the middle. So to do an effective turnaround in your code, okay, if you can't do a cul-de-sac under your code in a current subdivision, they allow for you to do a T. So you come down and there's a T. That's what your code allows. Well, this part of the T over here is out in the canal. So it's kind of off the table. But you can do this half of the T, which would be an improvement, okay? And if it's 10-by-12 or 10-by-10, pickups, mail trucks, most delivery trucks, FedEx, all could utilize that to simply back in and back out. It would be in the county right-of-way. It would not be on private property.
And so...
And the client pays for that.
Thank you. I was going to say, who's going to be responsible for that? And the other thing is, is I just want to put this out there because Commissioner Finnegan is also a citizen. And now, and so this question has been asked, that this was bought in 2020, 2021?
Correct.
So it was bought with this situation. Why are we trying to vacate if it was bought that way very recently?
I don't know how often the prior owners lived there. I don't know if it was a weekend place or not. The Finnegans live there full-time. And it is a problem. I mean, the photos of the damage that was done in January describe what the potential is. Instead of hitting the wall, they could hit the power pole. And then the power pole comes down. So for the benefit of the Finnegans and then for the benefit of the public, it inadvertently drives down there. If we put that pad in, we have improved the situation materially.
Thank you. You've answered my questions. I really appreciate and would be willing to support...
Commissioner, we haven't heard from the other side yet.
Sorry, I'm not willing or unwilling to support anything at this time. But I do appreciate that the suggestion of the pad because I did have, you know, could we get some kind of pad there for deliveries and the mail? So I'm such an open mind, I'm prepared. Is there anything else for Mr. Stillwell? Commissioner Cannard?
The two concerns that I had so far were addressed in your questions by Mr. Stillwell. First, if this pad was going to be installed, who was paying for it? And secondly, overall, if we did end up approving this, is it improvement? Is it an improvement to that road overall? And both of those have been answered so far. So be anxious to hear from staff at this point.
Thank you. If I could go back to your question about why it's being done now. Before the Finnegans acquired both of these lots, they were split ownerships. So that probably is what's driving the whole issue. You can see the split ownerships probably didn't have the same type of concerns that they do.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
The idea of the pad, where are you anticipating putting that? On the Finnegan's property or the formerly... Or the... What's being made? So do you need to change the legal description?
No, no. You vacate the 2,666 feet like we've described. You condition your resolution that within the existing right-of-way, the existing right-of-way, 50 feet, that we would put the pad on the landward side of it, not on Dr. Barnes or Bates's property in the existing right-of-way, which would require a road right-of-way utilization permit.
And the Finnegans are going to do the engineering and everything to figure out how that's going to be done?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Board?
Yes, for clarification, is... I'm looking at the map, and I'm a visual person. So I'm looking at the overhead, and I've been looking at Google Maps. Is it the box part where it shows essentially what is the cul-de-sac? It's not really a cul-de-sac, but is that where the T is going to go?
It's going to go outside of that.
Okay, between the blue roof house and the one right next door?
It's going to go...
I mean inward.
The ideal spot for it would be envisioned, if you will. Someone pulls up, and there's a sign that says, "Private property, no trespassing." Now, right now, they're going to do a three-point turn in that 20 feet of pavement and try and not hit the utility poles.
Right.
So if you move 20 feet out from the vacate line, and then you put a 10-by-12 or 10-by-10 or whatever is available at the right-of-way there, inside of the right-of-way, then the person... The only movement they have to make is put the car in reverse, look in the rearview mirror, and back into the T. So the pad would be very proximate to the Finnegan's property and away from the driveway of the neighbor.
The third house, right? So I'm looking at the overhead where it's counting one, house 1, 2, 3, 4. And the Finnegan's own 1 and 2, so it would be going between 2 and 3.
Yes, skewed heavily towards the Finnegan property.
All right.
Anything else, Commissioner Davis?
No, ma'am.
Anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna?
Okay, this is a street vacation. And Mr. Stillwell's given a little bit of a history just because it's getting so much attention very quickly to support some of what he said is, street vacations are not that unusual. We get three to four a year. They do not come to you until staff has recommended approval. Just on your agenda today, you did set a hearing for another street vacate for your next meeting. When we do street vacates per that comprehensive policy, we're looking at, does it affect utilities? Does it affect the transportation network? Is it reducing access? So this is a map. I know Commissioner Davis was looking in aerial. That would be the number... Lot 2 there would be the blue roof that she's seeing, and I'll pull that up in a minute. This is the area that is proposed for vacate. And Mr. Stillwell appears to be proposing using the bottom right corner of this area, of this grayed area, as the area that they would construct a little bit more of a slab for a T turnaround. And this is looking at the lot, and I'm looking at the street. There are two lots. I guess I should have pointed that out. On this particular one, you can see the back lot, Lot 1. It's funky. It's... All the other lots have a lot of frontage. This one has a very small bit of frontage. So lots 1 and 2 are actually both owned by the property owner in this application. By removing the road in this area, Lot 1 is now landlocked. We can't have that. So what they've done is a lot reconfiguration. They've split the vacate area so that each lot would still have the same amount of frontage on Blue Water Point. So that was one of the steps they had to complete before they came before you. Your packet includes a lot reconfiguration. If this vacation is included, is approved, we would also have the lot reconfiguration recorded at the same time to deal with landlocking. So this, again, is the lot. You can see where that boat trailer is parked. That's actually the drive going back to that back lot. That's not the road. The road stops before that. And this is skidding back a little bit more to let you see. There is a bit of a turnaround area there on the left. I think it's been constructed by the applicant. That certainly doesn't look like roadway. That would not be available. But about where the county vehicle is in this picture, I think is his turnaround area that he's talking about. And also is the area where you see pictures in the application where there's a wall that keeps getting hit by people. So I think they might have to take that down for what he's proposing, but I'm sure he can address that. And this is part of the wall in the house. This is the area that would be vacated if this application is approved. And they do have the letters from utility companies. There were several utility companies, Spectrum, Duke Energy, and Century Link that had some facilities in here, and so they have easement deeds. So if this application is approved, those particular easement deeds would also be recorded to address utility concerns. Staff, county staff and state environment health staff have recommended approval with those conditions, the lot reconfiguration, and the letters from the utility... The easement deeds from the utilities.
Thank you. Board?
I guess I'm...
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm a little bit confused about exactly where this turnaround would be constructed. Is that being constructed in the... In any of the area that we're vacating? Or would that be... Would that be constructed in the front yard of the abutting property?
Neither.
Okay. I am confused then, help me out.
All right. For you visual people up there?
Can you use the picture?
I'm not that tall, Denise. Where is the county's picture of the county vehicle?
Joanna? There it is.
All right. The rear end of the county vehicle is just outside of the vacate line.
Okay.
So you come back one vehicle length. And then, on the landward side of the existing paved road, not the waterward side,
Right.
you would put the pad in. Now, that's not in the front yard. It's in the public right-of-way. It's not been vacated. So, and I've explained that to the neighbor multiple times, trust me. And so the pad would be in such a place that you could just turn and back into it in the public right-of-way, built by my client, maintained by my client.
Can I ask a question? Take the floor from you.
Yeah, I'm good.
So the way I'm envisioning it is if you are looking at the Finnegan's home, to the right, their home is to the right, the water's to the left, there is a power pole.
Right there.
And then there's some landscaping rocks, things like that. Would it be before the power pole or after the power pole closest to their home?
If this is the power pole, okay? And this was the car stopped in front of the right-of-way, okay?
Yes.
The stubout would be right here in the public right-of-way. It would be from here to the diocese, the width of a car. But this car stopped here. You got the visuals going?
Yeah, I'm with you.
Getting back in.
This is the most fun I've had with you. And how are you back in? How would it back in? Thank you, thank you. I do, thank you. Do you have that, Commissioner Cannard?
I think so, yes.
Commissioner, Madam Attorney, you wanted to say something?
May I speak with Mr. Stillwell?
Yes.
Is this considered a song role?
We're not allowed to have fun?
This can be, if, this can be approved by the county engineer. That's how we do it, right? Just, if you, Denise says, should we come back with a picture? All I can say to you is you got a county engineer? We're gonna submit the plans. He looks at the plans. He applies the standards and the county engineer.
She.
Excuse me.
A, and I, I, um, okay. I have.
So when you work in a county right of way, which we would be doing, you file for a right of way utilization permit, which is a set of drawings, goes to the county engineer. You have to have insurance also with the county name while you're doing it. And then they sign off on it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bates, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Commissioner Davis?
Um, I think we're about to bring this train into the station. I'm looking at Google Maps Street View. So that's why I'm, I've got a pretty good eyes view here. The, um, I'm sorry. Oh, gosh, I'm getting chastised. Um, how, how, you said the, the right of way is how far off the pavement?
Right of way.
Cause it looks like it's in somebody's front yard.
I know. Right, and, and frankly, most people think wrongly that they own to the pavement.
No, they don't.
They don't.
Mm-hmm.
And neither does the gentleman lot three. So, uh, from the pavement, there's a, somewhere around about fifteen feet before he gets to his lot. Well, that's more than adequate to put in something like that.
Just wanted to make sure.
Commissioner Bates?
So you're gonna take fifteen feet off the neighbor's front yard?
No, no, ma'am. Out of the public right of way. He doesn't own to the pavement.
Well, I'm saying his front yard. His grass in his front yard.
No, it's your grass.
Well, you, you know the point I'm trying to make.
It's your grass and it's flat. And it will enhance the safety for all the vehicles that go down there and turn around. To include, right now, they're turning around in the neighbor's driveway if they're not doing free. I know. And he's expressed that to me. He didn't want people continuing to turn around in his driveway. This is providing a point where they can do, not turning around in his driveway, but it, it's right in front of the, uh, Finnegan's property.
I think, I wanna wrap this up. I think we've all had it, but why would, would, why wouldn't we talk to our county engineer and have them take fifteen feet on the Finnegan's side of the easement rather than going forward? But that would be something the engineers would, would. They were gonna have, they're gonna tell us the best place if this goes forward of where to put this pad.
It can be put, uh, if you vacate, it, it, then it would be immediate. First off, the, if you were to put it on, on the Finnegan's side, the two-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-six square feet would go down to about eighteen-hundred square feet. I'm not sure. And then you, what you have to understand is that power pole is right there on that line. So if you were to do that, they're backing up towards the power pole, which is the least desirable thing you want.
Okay, thank you. Madam Attorney?
Our engineers won't be designing this. The Finnegan's will design it and submit that to the county engineer.
Ms. Bates, I, I gotta tell you, I discussed this with the lot three owner three times already. And he came away with the conclusion, this was far better than having people back all the way up and doing a turnaround in his driveway. This will keep them from happening. So yes, it might be a slight visual, um, takeaway from the look, okay? But that same visual impairment's gonna affect the Finnegan's also. Yeah, but it's safer.
Okay. Anything, Board?
Yes. What I'm reading from backup on the email from, um, Henry Brooks, sounds like he was talking about putting a keypad in front of four homes.
What Mr. Brooks wants to do, and Mrs. Cattuas told him, you can't do it unless everybody signs off, is he wants to do a replat down there and come back in, take all four lots, do a replat, dedicate the road to those four lot owners, put a pad in, uh, at the edge of lot four, not down where the Finnegan's are. But if he does that, he has to bring the road up to code. And we just talked about the forty-foot radius for the cul-de-sac. And that would be the issue that he would address in doing that. You can see it from his letter. He has issues very, very similar to what my clients have as far as public, the public taking advantage of that roadway. He talks about people camping in his front yard right now.
Okay, so I, I completely understand that he does not own grass. This, Mr. Brooks is the one that we're talking about putting a pad in his front yard. And I understand it's not his front yard, it's our grass. Totally get the legal distinction. However, this is obviously a case that's getting a lot of attention. So I'm sorry, we're doing extra due diligence on this. Do you have it in writing that he's okay that we're gonna do this or are we gonna get?
Well.
Pushback?
I can, uh, relate to you affirmatively. Three times I've described it to him and he has signed off on it. On Friday, I said, if I don't hear from you, I will write, I will advise the board of our discussions and that's what we agreed to. And that's what I'm doing. And then he sent the letter today, uh, because he didn't send it, uh, last week. And he, and I talked with him again this morning and I said, you left out the part about the pad. And he go, he's more interested in a big picture right now than one ten-by-ten pad, I assure you.
I wanna, I, I really do wanna support this. I would just really like this to be tied up in a little bit more of a bow. I really do wanna.
And I want you to know, I really, really tried.
Yeah. But I'll hear what the rest of the board says.
We have to hear from the public too.
Mm-hmm. Anything further? Board members?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, um, I would like to see, um, uh, I'm, I'm inclined to support this. But I would like to know that their abutting neighbor is, is okay with this pad, um, right there in front, in front of their house. Uh, cause I can, I can see where they would be okay with, um, uh, this vacate, provided that Finnegan's are providing someplace other than his driveway to turn around it. But I just, I really would like to see something from him.
So do you have a suggestion for that?
Madam Chair?
We have.
Yes.
This is, it's a perfectly legitimate request. And I've explained to my clients, we've spent a lot, almost a year here, fourteen months, good chunk of change for the surveyors and others. And just, uh, can we postpone this two weeks and I'll bring you back the neighbor's consent? Fair enough?
Yeah. I'd love to see that.
I, I love that and I would love to see, um.
We'll see if we can get a little design for you too.
Yes. Thank you. I, I, do we have a consensus?
You still have to have public hearing.
Okay.
Public, open to the public.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you and I appreciate you working with us to remedy this. Um, at this time, if there is anyone that would like to speak to this item, H, is it H one? Um, please come to the podium, give us your name and, uh, where you live and you will have three minutes to speak.
Sabrina Watson, La Canto, Florida. Um, I've spoke about this before and I actually, I find this kind of fascinating because when we, when the, the county needs property like from, uh, Commissioner Schleba to create a new road, the county pays one-point-two-five percent of its value. But when somebody wants to rearrange their neighborhood, it looks like maybe up to four houses will be able to, need to be rearranged and, uh, block access on those roads and possibly to the end house, we give them the property to do that, which I don't quite understand. Secondarily, my other question, which I actually emailed you guys about and I didn't get an answer of any kind, was is this, they may own both houses now, but is the house on the end legal to be sold without county road access or without an egress? Because it sounds to me like there's not gonna be an egress available for them for roadway. So, um, that's pretty much all I got. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none. Uh, Sabrina, this is quasi judicial. We cannot email you about this. Correct? Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Um, yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I think that, uh, maybe Ms. Watson, uh, didn't see the whole package, but there is a lot reconfiguration that's being done at the same time. So we are not blocking access to lot number one because there's a, a reconfiguration being done. So I just wanted to let her know that.
And that is a, a legal ingress egress, correct? Is it considered an ingress egress from that back?
It's road access.
Yeah, the lot reconfiguration takes care of the access, so we are not landlocking. We couldn't bring it forward if we're really locking a lot.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, well, they closed, uh, public comment on this board. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I believe our next meeting is, uh, in three weeks, not in two weeks, correct? It's February twenty-eighth?
Right, but we have to notice it, it, we have to advertise it. So I was going to suggest that it come back as soon as we can get it advertised and back on your agenda. I'm not sure whether that would be the next meeting or the following one.
Okay.
But the very next one that we can get everything advertised.
Okay. He just said bring it back in two weeks. Uh, you're gonna be here by yourself.
Thank you. So. Board, what is your pleasure? We, I need a direction on H one.
Uh, I was, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, right, go right ahead.
I would suggest we, uh, we postpone this, um, uh, and renotice it for, uh, as soon as possible. Get it back on our agenda. And, uh, I think we've, we've been very clear about what we're looking for. Um, a, uh, a, a letter from that abutting neighbor, um, indicating that they are okay with this turnaround pad in the right of way, uh, in, in front of their front yard.
Thank you. Do we need a second on that?
Uh, there's no motion.
Cause we're just gonna table it.
Yes, and we'll make sure that the, the resolution and everything that comes back before you is properly worded to anticipate the turnaround area.
And I'll have some pictures of that area. Didn't expect that today, so we'll get that.
I wasn't allowed to warn you what I was gonna do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Thank you, Finnegan's. Thank you. Okay, at this time now, we're gonna move forward with H two. Joanna, is this also yours?
So I'm sorry, um, I don't know if Mr. and Mrs. Pollard are here or not.
Oh, yes, they're here.
Did they wanna come up?
So, uh, you're the applicants. Would you like to come forward, please?
For the record, this is not a street vacation. This is a plat vacation.
Oh, hallelujah.
They're different.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Say whatever you want to say. I have a presentation too, but you're welcome to tell them what you're trying to do.
We're just trying to vacate an easement so we can build our home.
Very good. Thank you. Joanna?
All right, this is an application to vacate a platted utility and drainage easement lying in block thirteen-oh-four of Citrus Springs, unit twenty. So this is a, this is a proximate area. You can see it's at the very end of West Aradani Court and they also have the lot next door. So there is an easement on this plat lying between the large seven-A lot on that map and lot twelve that they own both of. Bad, bad English, sorry. This is what it looks like. You cannot tell there's any easement here. There's no utility lines here. We do have releases from all utility companies that had absolutely no concern. Um, this is, uh, the proximate area on a map, but again, there's, you certainly can't see it out here. So this application has gone through staff review and county, um, county health department review and had no concerns. It is recommended for approval. There are no utility easement deeds with this particular application.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant or for staff?
No, ma'am.
I can't see Commissioner. Thank you. Seeing none at this time, um, this is part of the public hearing, so we would open this up to the public for public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on H two vacating an easement? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment. So Joanna?
Just looking for a motion for approval.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we approve, uh, this plat vacate twenty-two dash zero-two.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Cannard, a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any additional public comment on H two? Seeing none. Board, any additional comments, discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. And thank you for your patience. Congratulations. Okay, moving on. We are now at, where are we at? Give me a moment. We are at regular business, I believe.
Bids, yeah.
We are at item E bids.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve item E one, A through I.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Cannard, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment regarding bids? E one, A through I. Seeing none. Any further board comments? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five-zero. Thank you. Thank you. We're at E two, regular business, budget transfers. Board would, yes, sir.
Motion to approve item E two.
Thank you. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cannard, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment regarding E two? Seeing none. Any further board discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, just for purpose of clarification, I did have a question about that. And, um, I think we're, we're gonna have everyone do, do better on E two. It was other contractual services with that two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. So if you don't mind, I got an answer from Michelle Alfred. I just wanted to make it public record. Um, I questioned that, you know, what's other? Because she says she's making our community better. And, uh, she said, due to the rising construction costs and availability of supplies, we have decided to move two-hundred-thousand dollars that was allocated for our ship home replacement strategy to other contractual services. This funding will assist our low-income families with emergency home repair and rehabilitation. This assistance will help with active home problems such as leaking roof, non-operational AC and also home rehabilitation to assist with making the home more energy efficient, windows, doors, new roof, AC, et cetera. We feel it would be the best use of funding and gives us the ability to assist more homeowners in our community. The additional twenty thousand moved into other contractual came from our mandatory utility connection strategy as we had no applications and we need to meet, meet our ship encumbrance deadline. So I just wanna thank Michelle Alfred for all of that and make that part of what other means.
Thank you. Board, any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five-zero. E three, budget resolutions. Board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve item E three.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cannard, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E three? Seeing none. Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five-zero. E four, site ass, access and user, use agreements with Southwest Florida Water Management District. We're looking for A and B.
I'll make a motion to approve E four, both A and B.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. Thank you, Commissioner Cannard. Any public comment about E four, A and B? Seeing none. Any further board discussion? Seeing none. Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. That passes 5-0. E5, approval of emergency fleet repairs over $35,000.
Motion to approve E5?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment regarding E5? Seeing none. Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. Moving along, E6, fiscal year 2022 assistance to firefighters, AFG grant, A and B.
Motion to approve E6, A and B.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on E6, A and B? Seeing none. Any further board discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, just on this one, uh, I just wanna bring it to everyone's attention. I did speak with the chief about this. Uh, once this, uh, grant money is approved, uh, there's still some purchasing issues that are being worked out, but everyone knows that those need to be worked out.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there any further board discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. E7, Tana Compactor Rental Extension, A and B. Approve and authorize and approve the related budget transfers.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E7, A and B.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment? See, seeing none. Um, any further board discussion? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. E8, Restore Act. The Barge Canal Boat Ramp. Approve and authorize the chairman to execute the addendum to the Gulf, the Gulf Consortium Subrecipient Agreement Number 2001-07132.01. There, we're asking to extend the period of performance to December 30th, 2024. Board, uh, what is your pleasure for E8?
I'll make a motion to approve. It is frustrating that, um, uh, the oil spill that these funds are ultimately coming from happened in 2012. And, uh, here we are in, in '23 and, and still waiting, uh, still waiting for this to happen. But I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve this.
Thank you. I'm looking for a second. I have a motion by Commissioner Cannard.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second, but can we direct, maybe legal to write a letter to find out and get a clarification on exactly what is the holdup?
Madam Attorney?
I, I can certainly do that, but I, I think that probably some other division or department within the county is working on this. So, I don't...
What, who's ever appropriate? I would like something to go out to, to give.
Yeah, we will. We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Is there any public comment about E8? Seeing none. Any further board discussion? I agree with, um, both of you that, um, government is moving extremely slow in this area and, um, it's just getting a little old. Um, so if we could find out what's going on. That being said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. Okay. Item F, Mr. Howard, commission, outstanding commission items.
Request approval to remove number eight as completed.
We completed something?
We did, at our strategic planning.
Well, there you go.
We brought that forward to you.
Put that on, put a check on that one.
Done.
Okay, so, um...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve F1 with the deletion of eight.
With the completion of eight. Thank you.
Well, yeah, completion, deletion.
Second.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any public comment for item F? Thank you. Any further board discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. G, County Administrator, Mr. Steve Howard.
Yeah, Erin was gonna come forward, uh, real quickly, just a quick presentation and also to get approval to, uh, set the budget hearing dates. If you could come forward, please.
Thank you. Welcome, Erin.
So, good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. We're gonna, um, do a brief presentation regarding the TRIM budget calendar. So, this talks about Department of Revenue and truth and millage, which we have to follow um, to adopt, um, our budget and levy, um, taxes. So, this first slide just basically explains TRIM, which is the truth and millage. It informs taxpayers and the public about the process that the county uses, um, to assess the added form taxes. To levy millage, the county must follow a Florida statute, Chapter 200, uh, determination of millage. In 2007, legislation revised the requirements to provide maximum millage limitations for non-voted levies. The maximum millage requirement applies to all taxing authorities except school districts. The county cannot levy a millage until the board has approved, uh, the millage and budget resolutions. Failure to meet TRIM requirements, uh, can result in the loss of revenue sharing for the county. TRIM timeline, this goes over, um, the property appraiser. June 1st, we get the estimated total assessed value for budgeting planning purposes. And July 1st, we'll receive the appraiser certifies taxable value. This is considered day one of the TRIM process. Um, in July, the Board of County Commissioners Budget Officer will deliver a tentative budget to the board in accordance with Florida Statute 129.033, County Annual Budget Preparation and Adoption of Budget. Uh, for fiscal year '24, the budget workshop is scheduled for July 26th. Uh, the board must approve a tentative millage at that workshop, and that is what will be included on the TRIM notices that go out. This slide talks about maximum millage. Uh, the county has a maximum millage limitation, um, of 10 mills by adopting a millage through one of the following: a majority vote, two-thirds vote, or unanimous vote. The maximum millage that can be approved by majority vote is based on the change in per capita of Florida personal income. Uh, that percentage change is not available until mid to late April. Um, no later than August 4th, the county must inform the property appraiser of the following information to prepare the TRIM notice. That includes a prior millage rate, the proposed millage rate, the rolled-back millage rate, and the date, time, and meaning place of the tentative budget hearing. Um, if the county fails to provide the information to the property appraiser, the county will be prohibited from levying a millage greater than the roll-back rate. And the property appraiser will use a roll-back rate for the notice of proposed property taxes, also known as TRIM notices. Um, no later than August 24th, the property appraiser must mail the TRIM notices. This is day 55 of the process. And then the Department of Revenue must also approve the assessment rule prior to the mailing of the TRIM notices. TRIM hearing information, the county must hold two public hearings to adopt the millage rates and the budget. Um, they may be held Monday through Friday after 5:00 PM, anytime on a Saturday, um, but never on a Sunday. For the TRIM hearing scheduling, the school board has priority for hearing dates. The BOCC has second choice. Um, no other taxing authority can hold a hearing on the same date as the school or the Board of County Commissioners. Currently, the tentative budget hearing, um, is set for September 7th. The county holds a public hearing on the proposed millage rate and the tentative budget. This tentative hearing is the date published on the TRIM notices. The tentative millage cannot exceed the proposed millage rate that was set in July unless, uh, we send out a revised TRIM notice that gets mailed to each taxpayer. The final budget hearing, we have tentatively set for September 26th. The county must hold a public hearing on the final millage rate and the final budget. The final millage cannot exceed the tentatively adopted millage rate. This goes over the votes to adopt the millage, um, majority vote. Majority vote rate is equal to the roll-back rate adjusted by the percentage change in Florida's per capita personal income. Two-thirds vote is the county may levy a millage up to 110% of the majority vote maximum millage rate. And unanimous vote, uh, the county may levy any millage up to their constitutional or statutory maximum millage. The millage cap is 10 mills, including the special taxing districts, the fire and the library. This slide goes over constitutional offices, um, and budget authority. For the supervisor of elections and the sheriff's office, the Board of County Commissioners, um, has that authority, uh, for both the supervisor elections and the sheriff's budget. For the clerk's office, Florida statute requires that the county fund the cost of communication, construction, lease maintenance, utilities, and security of facilities performing court-related functions. The BOCC also has budget authority for the board-related functions like commission records, finance, and internal audits. Uh, the court-related services performed by the clerk's office are funded through court fines and fees. Uh, the public defender, state attorney, circuit court, and guardian enlatum. Uh, the county is required to fund the cost of communication, criminal justice information systems, construction or lease, maintenance, utilities, and security of facilities performing the court-related functions. As well as the technology portion, um, of their budget is funded by court fines and fees. Oops, sorry. Uh, the property appraiser and tax collector, the budgeting authority is the Florida Department of Revenue. The property appraisers is due to the Department of Revenue on July 1st, with the board being able to comment through August 14th. DOR approves the final budget on August 15th, and the tax collector's budget is due to DOR on August 1st. If determined adequate, uh, they approve their budgets. So, that is just a brief summary of TRIM and the budget timeline that we follow.
Thank you, Erin. And Mr. Howard, what, um, you're looking for from this board is, uh, guidance to the staff on where, uh, what, basically a starting point, where we want them to start in order to develop the, the 2023-24 budget, correct?
Correct, and we're asking approval for that, that date to be Tuesday, March the 28th, 2023, 1:45 PM.
Thank you.
And then also the other, uh, dates within your packet as well. Uh, the tentative budget hearing date of Thursday, September 7th, 2023, at 5:01 PM. Also, the, sorry, before that, the library special district, the fire protection special district, as well as the, at the Board of County Commissioners on July 26th, 2023, at 9:00 AM.
Thank you. And at, on the, at the March 28th, 2023 meeting at 1:45, that is where we will discuss where we're gonna be at the prior millage rate, the proposed millage rate, roll back. Is, am, am I correct, Erin?
So, at that one, we can give you, um, basically, we'll have to make some assumptions, and then we can show you what that would look like if you went to roll back. Some assumptions for growth, if we didn't go to roll back. And we would look for guidance on overall budget, where you would wanna be. In the paperwork that, uh, Doug was so kind to pass out to you, we also included a form. If you want to fill that out, if there's any projects or anything that you all would like, um, included in the budget or you would like to see when we come to that March presentation, please let us know, um, so we can provide you that information to assist with making those decisions.
And for your new board members, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Erin, you were here, Denise. The reason why this is here is because, um, I felt, I don't know if Commissioner Davis felt, but that the budget process just kinda rolled right over us. And when, when it came time to discuss, like, road resurfacing or whatever, we kinda were told we missed the boat on that. So, um, I believe this is why this is here, so, um, could thank Commissioner Davis for that. That, um, then you can be more involved because it, the first budget is, um, it, it literally is drinking from a fire hose. And, and so, um, thank you for that, and that's why we're at this stage. I do wanna just ask one other question. Um, we don't have to decide today wh, wh, where we wanna start with the budget because, okay, thank you. Because, um, as you know, if we start at roll back, then we can't go up. But if we start at the proposed millage rate, we can always go down.
Well, in, in March, we're just strictly gonna look for where you all want to be. When we come back in July, that's when you all will start setting those.
Okay.
Those millages.
It's a blur to me, so thank you for the, for your guidance, and I appreciate your professionalism.
No problem.
Mr. Howard?
And, you know, part of the strategic planning is trying to drive that budgeting process too. So, by then, we should have some activities, milestones, which hopefully would be within that 11-month window, which would then be part of your, your budgeting process.
Thank you. Board, what is your pleasure for G1?
Move approval.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Bayes. I'm looking for a second. Second, Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment at this time regarding G1? Seeing none. Any further board discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. That passes 5-0. And now we are at a 3:00 PM time certain presentation from the hospital board. If you are here from the hospital board, please approach the podium. Mr. Grant, are you representing the hospital board?
Reluctantly, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Howard, Attorney Lynn. I'm here on behalf of Chairman Dr. Fowles of the Citrus County Hospital Board. He sends his apologies that he was unable to attend physically today due to a matter that he's addressing. However, we want to be able to tell you a couple of things that are very significant that we are considering, and I'm here to tell you about those things. First, Dr. Cannard, I continue to applaud you in championing the Baker Act facility. The hospital board recognizes without a doubt that the Citrus County community of people need the facility to further its own mental health issues and address those. I'm not a mental health professional. I don't intend to be. And so, what I do know is, though, that there are some of our neighbors that continually are afflicted with some mental health challenges and that we need a facility to be able to address those in the Baker Act facility context. Baker Act is a legislative term. It's a term of art. It means very significant things. It's a set of statutes that detail what happens when law enforcement engages a citizen that may hurt themselves or another person to be able to preclude that and address the mental health crisis that that man, woman, or child may be having. This is where this happened. Several years ago, the Citrus County Hospital Board was in the, in the midst of considering what to do with the mental health circumstances. This was three or four years ago. I remember candidly being at the LaCanto Government Center when the trustees were addressing this, uh, very, 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 very same issue. We were approached then by a citizen at that point who indicated that, uh, the hospital board may have been late to the dance. Um, and they pushed back on it, and the hospital board said, "Step back some" because they did not want to interfere. They did not want to become an obstruction to something that they dearly wanted to see come to fruition. It became that the Baker Act facility was gonna lie on Citrus County property out with the, with the doghouse out there by the jailhouse, okay? And that these facilities were going to be there, and they were gonna complement one another. And there was a, there was, uh, uh, Dr. Musulo committed some funds to that end. The hospital board wanted to contribute, and so we engaged out there with those entities. And so we engaged out there with those entities. It began to seem, and there was in the news when you, the elected leaders of our community, decided to make a stream from one mental health provider to another. The hospital board does not want to become involved in who you select to operate for our Baker Act. So everything I tell you here today only goes to the capital project of creating the Baker Act facility in Citrus County, but does not address who it is that you select on our behalf to operate. Dr. Fowles wants to extend that he wants the hospital board's opinion that the facility be owned by the taxpayers of Citrus County, that the proceeds that the hospital board is willing to commit be provided to you, the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners, to determine this capital project. I say capital project because we, like you, are guided by a set of principles and laws. We have to be careful on how we say what those funds are. The hospital board perceives this not as service, but as money to build a capital project, a building that will be here long after you and I are gone, to serve the men and women and children of our community. One of the reasons that we were concerned was because when we began this process and this discussion in earnest and in good faith, that the building and the property was going to be owned by the county on county land, and the goalpost began to move. And I had to come here once or twice because there were certain things that were in editorials in the newspaper that was simply not the stated position of the hospital board. And Chairman Wrestler at the time dispatched me to dispel that notion, to be sure that what we say is the same that we've been saying all along. Now Chairman Wrestler has since retired and moved to North Carolina and she's smarter than all of us. Uh, but I remain and Dr. Fowles is now our chairman and picked up the mantle that Doc, that, that Chairman Wrestler left for us. I was at a meeting maybe a few months ago and my friend and colleague, Dr. Kennard, unbeknownst to me, made a comment. And I want to be sure that it's clear the hospital board perceives this as a partnership. No adversarial circumstances at all. In fact, we met with Dr. Kennard, Dr. Masulo, John Cherry, Jean McGee, Jeff Rogers, cannot remember her name.
Toby Phillips.
To, thank you, thank you, Doctor Toby Phillips and Dr. Fowles at a meeting at the college where we all talked about it and shared this. And the discussion seemed to be who was going to own the property. Dr. Fowles offers the following. He offers to workshop or meet in efforts to make the commitment. My, my friend indicated that I was anticipating going to a meeting or two. As I understand it, and later I was directed to listen to the thing, I don't, I did not take out of context what, what Dr. Kennard said. But I want to clarify to make sure that we're all on the same page. When it was that the hospital board didn't make a commitment, so don't include, I don't think he didn't mean, he didn't, I, I know that he did not mean we weren't committed to the project. It's that the dollar amount had not yet been committed. And so I want to make sure that's clarified here that we are always on board with you, Doctor, and your ambition to have a Baker Act facility. The other day, the hospital board resolved a major issue with the federal government from the previous tenants of our hospital. Where we resolved a seventeen million dollar potential issue with D O J down to a three hundred thousand dollar C M S resolution, which substantially allows additional resources to come and play for consideration. As I sit here today, I can't tell you how much the hospital ward's willing to commit, but I'm telling you, they're willing to commit. I would appreciate you as our county leaders to take in what I'm saying, every one of you know me. Okay, I'm here to tell you, hospital board is committed, Dr. Fowles would like to workshop or meet or partner with you to discuss what the hospital board's commitment could be in ambition of your two million, the other county's two million, to commit a Baker Act facility in perpetuity for our, for our neighbors. I believe when people come to a meeting and they make statements, that that's helpful. County government, hospital government should all be transparent. Everyone should know everything at all the time. To me, that's outstanding. When Mr. Cherry came to one of our meetings and in response to some questions from trustees, he made a statement that resonated with the hospital board. And that was at the time, because it won't be, won't be if, it's going to be when you make a change. It may be tomorrow, it may be a decade from now. But the likelihood is, Livestream will not be in perpetuity of the services that you want our citizens to have. My point, Mr. Cherry said, we'd be willing to sell back or lease back the facility to you. The trustees do not accept that position respectfully. We believe that we were willing to put forward money and resources from the three, three political entities to own it so that it's smooth transition to whomever you choose to operate it. I appreciate your time, Madam Chairman, thank you kindly for letting me come today to speak. If there's any questions, I'd love to have them answered, I am prepared. But I do want you to know that Dr. Fowles, as Chairman of the Hospital Board, is readily available to meet. We require under our statute at least a seven-day notice, uh, when he's going to speak about hospital business and there may be other trustees that come. Because the other trustees are as ambitious as Dr. Fowles. Questions, please?
Thank you, um, Commissioner Finnegan.
Hi, Mr. Grant.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that you don't have the dollar amount yet, but just listening to what you're saying, is it possible that if Citrus County commits two million dollars, Hernando County commits two million dollars, that the hospital board would commit the balance of the funds?
I can tell you this, I'm not engaged to tell you that today, but I can tell you, it's my opinion that the commitment will be well in excess of seven figures.
Thank you.
But I can't tell you that amount.
Okay.
But I can tell you, seven figures is quite a range, ma'am. And I can tell you that the hospital board just committed six point seven million dollars in line act funds to make sure that Citrus County had nursing education. At this campus, there is, there is the same type of enthusiasm, ma'am. Because as I sit here today, I don't even know what the project costs in totality, to be honest with you. But I know it's worth the conversation, ma'am. And I know, I know I wouldn't be here telling you this at the direction of Chairman Dr. Fowles if they didn't share the ambition of what I just said. Is that helpful, ma'am?
Not really.
Okay.
Well, just because seven figures is, is a range, you know.
That's right.
Could it be up to a fifteen million dollar figure?
Well, that's eight figures, so.
Oh, right, well.
Up to nine million.
Right, and it could be even more, but I'm just telling you that it's my opinion it'll be at least seven figures. But I don't know that number. But it's worth the conversation. When I was asked, when I was asked what was the total project cost, I don't know. Doctor, Doctor Kennard might have an idea, he's been more involved, Attorney Lynn may have more of an idea, I don't know. But I know that I've reviewed a lot of information and I don't know, because I, I can't discern which is the Baker Act facility beds and may what be a mental health hospital. And I'm not qualified to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, Commissioner Finnegan? Thank you. Um, Commissioner Davis, you got a question?
I just had a comment that, uh, reading, reading between. Reading between the lines, it sounds like, um, it, I did sort of get some clarity there. Um, I will say that early on when I took office, I said it is ideal that the county own the facility. However, it's not, if this is the only way we can go about it is to go the track we've been going, which is we put two million in and Hernando puts two million in, but they have to build the facility. If Livestream is building the facility, then I understand their point of view and then it becomes more of a, we're giving them a fee for service. Because they are funding, you know, they're, it's, um, anytime you're operating for those that are uninsured, typically funds are tight. And so it becomes, and I became, you know, I actually promoted that, I asked our attorney, I was like, well, why can't it just be, can't we just talk about it being as a service, not as an actual property, capital property that we're owning? However, ideally, the county owns it, you're absolutely right, just to keep it clean, that's the ideal situation. And then Livestream or whomever ends up leasing it from us. So that is my preference, but quite frankly, we're going to need some financial, big financial assistance to make that happen from the hospital board. So.
And I'm, I'm here to tell you that it's absolutely worth your discussion, ma'am.
Yes.
Commissioners?
No, I, I don't think so, I think I'm good.
Commissioner Bayes?
I think this is exciting news, I love the idea. Um, it takes the question out of what if sometime down the road, as you said, Livestream could be the service provider today, it could be the service provider for ten years or twenty years. And if we decide, if we own it and we contract with them, they, you know, they can still deliver those services, that's all still yet to be determined. But I think this is the perfect model. It mimics some of the other things that we do, such as the jail, we own the jail building, but we contract with somebody to deliver the service. You know, the Y M C A made a big push to own their own facility, they did a capital campaign and look what it's doing for our community today. I will say I've done a great deal of, um, investigating of the mental health and some other issues that are going on within our county. We have a big problem. And it's, you know, a Baker Act is, facility is not going to fix it all. Um, in fact, they're probably overused in today's circumstances, but I think it, it is something that is needed. And I think, um, us controlling our destiny and making sure that we can provide the services to our citizens is what is most important here and that we are not at the mercy that, uh, of a contract with several different counties, that they could put limitations on the number of beds that they would actually provide to our citizens after we've extended monies to a, a facility in their ownership. So I'm going to leave it at that, I know we've got a lot of other discussion topics about this today, but I, I appreciate you coming here today and, um, thank you very much. And tell Dr. Fowles, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I wasn't going to comment on it. Um, Mr. Grant, most of the time I enjoy hearing what you have to say at the podium and today's no exception. Um, coming to the podium and, and, um, uh, expressing that the hospital board is interested in, in, uh, in partnering um, uh, with us on this, uh, on this Baker Act facility that we have got to get, uh, across the finish line. Uh, that is, um, that's welcome news. Uh, I will tell you that I, I'm not a hundred percent convinced, uh, that, um, uh, county ownership of the building is absolutely the way to go. Uh, what we're looking for is, uh, the facility and the services to be provided in the county. Um, whether or not the county owns another building that we're stuck with, uh, maintaining, um, years down the road, uh, I don't know that it is in the hospitals or in the, uh, in the county's best interest. Uh, I do have an agenda item later, um, uh, later, uh, further in, further down the agenda um, to, uh, to try and start moving this ball forward. Uh, it appears that, uh, Hernando County is, uh, is prepared to get involved in partnering with Citrus County in funding, uh, the services. And, um, uh, then Livestream is going, is prepared to put real skin in the game, uh, in constructing this building. And I, I would, I would tend to lean more towards the, in the capital part of it, rather than us being involved in, um, having the hospital board and the county fund the capital portion of it, uh, let private industry fund the capital portion of it. We're interested in making sure the ser- services are being delivered. So that'll be the part of my discussion later on in the agenda, but thank you for being here as always, my friend.
Always, and thank you for continuing to push the Baker Act facility that's desperately needed in our community.
Thank you.
If you have an agenda item that you're going to be discussing this later, I am literally across the street. If there's any question that comes up, um, Ms. Lynn knows my cell number. Uh, and so I will gently come right back over here if you need anything. Okay, I hope then if it's on an agenda item, that there is a movement to engage with the hospital board. I don't know what that would look like, Mr. Howard, uh, whether it's designated to staff or, or we loved working with Dr. Kennard. Uh, and any of these commissioners are welcome, however it works, we are available, we stand, we just need to post our notice eight days before any meeting. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Um. Yes, ma'am.
I, I appreciate, you know, you coming forward and, uh, Dr. Fowles, I think he, actually, Dr. Fowles truly is a brilliant mind. And, um, I respect him and how he thinks. I, I just have a few concerns I would like to go through with you. I have always been of the mindset that o- owning the building is my first preference. And, um, you know, it wasn't moving that way and, um, you know, Commissioner Kennard has been pushing this rock uphill for quite some time. I've been on the board for two and a half years and it's just, again, this is something that has to be addressed. So, you know, that being said, I, I, I got, I got on board of, okay, we'll, we'll try to figure a way to provide services. Um, but again, my first preference has always been the county owns the building, the county then ha- um, subcontracts to a provider. And the reason why is because, um, whether, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel that that will give the citizens a little more control and the county more control on who is providing the highest standard of me- mental health. You know, whoever that provider is, we, if they own the building, I kind of always thought, well, we're, you know, that's a private business. Yes, we're, we're contributing tax dollars to help this service. But if we own the building and we let the subcontractors know, hey, if you're not meeting this metric and you're not providing the highest standard, then w- we're going to look for somebody else. And I, that's how I feel we would have a little more control to make sure that, that we're getting the best, um, and the best and highest standards for our citizens. Um, you know, I, again, though, what's bothering me is Livestream has been talking about a building for quite some time that I have not seen anything about, you know, we had a one presentation. I don't even know how long ago, it's, it, it wasn't within this year. And, um, I'm, I'm concerned about the hospital board, you know, i- it dragging on even further. Uh, we need to get something done, we need to make a decision, we need a building where mental health, Baker Act facility is, you know, being taken care of. So, so I, I don't want to, um, discourage you, but I also want you to tell me when you think this could get done, when could we accomplish this? Because I, I haven't heard when, when Livestream's going to get this accomplished.
Well, well, let me be really clear. The hospital board would write the check and draft the M O U. You would be responsible or whoever you designate to build the facility.
Right.
And we want no part of who's chosen to operate, that's your lane, we're going to stay in ours.
Well, that, what I'm saying is, how soon would you be willing to write a check?
Well, it took us almost forty days for the college.
Okay, very good, okay, there you go, show me the money, that's what I'm getting at.
So what I say to you is this, if you, and I'm really, I'm heartened to hear that you're going to have it for a discussion amongst you later today. If you decide that you want to look, to develop this possibility, the hu- the trustees are standing by in whatever capacity you want to meet to talk. We had to do it in the public, obviously, it's public money, you know, newspaper will be there, everybody will come. So we just have to do that, but we're, Dr. Fowles indicated that the only ob- obstruction we have is called Florida Statute one eighty-nine that requires us to wait seven days.
Okay.
To post the notice. They're ready to start this engagement and talking as soon as you are.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, you'll know.
Folks, folks, could you keep your cross top to, at a lower volume or go outside because it's hard for us to hear, Mr. Grant? Go ahead, yes, sir.
So it's my opinion that they're ready to talk rather quickly about development. I can only tell you the two things that the trustees said, that the conveyance of, of, bless you, of money for this project would in the M O U say that it has to be county-owned and lie on county property. So those are going to be the constrictions that I know that the trustees have thus far indicated. And remember, ma'am, I respect what you're saying, but we were respectfully kind of pushed back a couple of times. a couple of times, and then the goalposts move a little bit. And so I understand what you're saying. We're ready to move forward. Dr. Fallows and the trustees are ready to engage in this conversation and let you know quickly as to not obstruct getting the facility done.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me a time cert, ma'am. May I be excused?
Any other? The other, the other matter might be coming up.
Yes?
I mean, he's, you might wait a few minutes.
Are you talking about the agenda item?
Aren't we almost done?
Yeah.
Yes, we're almost done.
If you can stick around for.
For a few minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a four o'clock, but yes, ma'am.
Very good, so.
May I be seated?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, so then now we're gonna go to G2.
G2. Just, this is asking approval to schedule a strategic planning retreat follow-up for performance review. We all have indicated that you're available on, on July the 19th. It'll be right here at the courthouse.
From 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM?
Correct.
Board, I'm looking for a motion for G2. Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment about? We're on G2?
I know, but you didn't ask for public comment. And I had plenty to say about Livestream.
Okay, that was, ma'am, that was a presentation. So, and please, do you have a comment on G2? G1?
I'd like invited to the party, but.
G, G1 is something completely different. So, any other public comment on G2? Seeing none, any further board comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. We are now at advisory board announcements. We don't have any J. Committee, committee reports for commissioners. Who would like to start? Commissioner Canard, do you have any committee reports?
No, nothing.
Commissioner Bayes?
Yes, I do. A couple. I sat in for Commissioner Canard as the alternate at the MPO. It was basically a reorganization and you weren't there and you didn't get nominated.
That's a good, that's a good thing. That's a good thing.
Were you scared? I think things are moving along pretty good. I know this is the new chair down here. I'm not sure why she asked me to give the report, but as everybody knows, the funding for the Suncoast is completed. There's about 908, 980 parcels, I believe is what they said. So, kind of looking at the demographics of that. And they're going to look at the 44 traffic counts. So that's all good and exciting news. So, that's that. My next one is, I also, was my very first time. I chaired what is required by Florida statute, our public safety meeting. There was a lot of discussion in that meeting about various things. And some concerns did come up with respect to services as they're being delivered by Livestream and one of the, I think the biggest issues is the continuance of care. Once somebody has been Baker acted and coming out and we don't, we don't have, we don't have the staff here. And a lot of these folks, when they get released, they don't have Wi-Fi. They're unable to have their, their sessions. So we, we've got some big issues and I think we really, it, it was a great opportunity for me to boil it down. We also had in that meeting the core civics and what's going on with them, the number of clients that they're serving. And so I've asked for us to maybe ramp these up. It's been kind of a typical process that these would only go on every three months. And I think that we have a problem in our community that we need to address. We need to address core civic and its interactions. We need to address our mental health actions and our drug court actions. And I think we need to come up with a more comprehensive plan and kind of be on the front edge of this. Maybe, you know, maybe we can become the people that figure out what's, what's going to go right. We rank 49th as a state of Florida for mental health in the country, and that's not acceptable. And I think it's an opportunity with what was presented to us just now. And what I'm discovering after going through this public safety committee that I think we have some very talented people in this community. I think we can address these issues. And we can come up with a plan and we can do better than what we're doing. And I, I'm, it's something I kind of feel very passionate about. We need to get some more players to the table. I invited Melissa Bower-Master from Jesse's Place, and they have a tremendous program. And it's very exciting to know that there, it's not a timetable, you know, what they're doing with those kids. You know, it might take two years of, of rehabilitation with them, but I, I think we can get there. I also reached out to Mrs. Savage this morning with the Alzheimer's and dementia program. I think that's something that we're seeing the rise of people that are being Baker acted through that. And, and, you know, sometimes that's just a Band-Aid to the problem. It can create more problems. And I will say this. It's, it's a very serious issue to Baker act somebody. Very serious. It has long consequences. If it's a young person, it could impact them for the rest of their life on career choices. And I think we have to find a way also, what I'm hearing mostly, is we have got to find the providers. You know, if we don't have the providers to come in and actually do a protocol and a follow-up treatment plan, we're not do, we're not doing anything by just Baker acting people. We have got to find the continuance of care to really curb this. So I'm excited about it. I know it's gonna be a heavy lift, but it's something I've challenged myself with and I really want to move forward on it. I think that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bayes. Commissioner Davis?
Really love what Commissioner Bayes said. Very good job on the rundown of mental health. I only have one committee meeting since the last one. It was Citrus County Community Charitable Foundation. That was my first time as chair. I also had a two-plus hour meeting with a clerk yesterday. I was put on that board to try to get it on a better track from a passing audits totally clean. And there is light at the end of the tunnel. We're getting there. You know, obviously, I've only been on that board for two years and an audit cycle goes way past, you know, before my time. So we're getting there. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
Nothing this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I had the Veterans Advisory Board and we're, got to a presentation by Congressman Gus Villaracas' team and his liaison. And went well and talking about different things that are, we were doing to try to help the veterans and getting them to their services. And also had the MPO board, which was reorganization, and I have the Transportation Disadvantage Board coming up. So I am good. So we will move on to K, which is, we'll start with Commissioner Finnegan. Do you have anything you would like to address?
No, ma'am.
For your district? Commissioner Canard?
Yeah, I will, I'll jump right into the Ozella fishing pier, John Brown Pier. The one that had, had been there was torn down due to safety reasons. Handrails were, were constructed and put in place to make it safe so that nobody was just going off the end of the road there. Then when, when I inquired about it being rebuilt, shame on me, honestly, for not following through at the time that it was being torn down, saying, okay, what's the timeline for it being rebuilt? There was no timeline that it was not gonna be rebuilt. And so I quickly asked for this to be put on the agenda today. That this board would take action and direct staff to move, begin the process of replacing that fishing pier. It was a pier that was used by the community, not just the Ozella community, but our Citrus County as a whole. It's in a great place for people to utilize as access to, to our local waters here. Let's see, we've got a, we've got a cost estimate of $40,000. Of course, depending on what it costs to permit it and so forth. But I would like to see us direct staff to begin that process of replacing it. You know, I'd like to see us look at maybe the TDC for some money because it certainly is used by by visitors to our community. If there's a way that we need to increase capacity of it, to make it, make it check that box. Or to increase utilization by our tourists. I, I don't know that. But either way, I would make a motion that we direct staff to begin the process of permitting and ultimately replacing the John Brown fishing pier.
Do you have anything else?
Nope.
Thank you. Commissioner Bayes?
Is it possible to turn that, not just as a pier, but could you actually make a section for the boat to tie boats up to it?
That I don't know. I don't know. I don't know where that falls in the Manatee Protection Plan, if that's adding additional slips. If that would be an issue. I don't have the, I don't have the answer to that. Good thought.
Madam Chair, I think you need a second. Yeah. And Commissioner Canard, you said you would like them to move forward on the permitting, but then B is additional side railings with a cost also.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if, if it's responsible to, to spend the $5,400 on the side railings right now. If we're gonna be taking these railings down or if those railings would stay in place if we're building a new pier. If they're gonna stay in place when the new pier is built, then absolutely we should move forward with going ahead and installing them now.
So you have, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Canard for L1. Board, I would be looking for a second.
Madam Chair?
Sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Bayes?
I would second that if we could also include to look at it, to see if it's possible, because that is a wonderful place for launching boats.
Yeah.
And I, and, you know, we don't have a lot of places here, and I know right now I think you just throw your anchor on the sand. Is it that correct? When you pull up?
I have fished, I've fished the, you're, you're probably right. I, I have fished the pier there. I've never attempted to bring a boat up.
I think when you bring in, you just, you throw your anchor out on the, in a rope off onto the beach area there. And I think this would just be some, one other tool in our toolbox.
I'm, I'm all for it. I'm all for it. I like the idea.
And, and to consider TDC funds?
Yes.
I don't think I heard that.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would definitely support it, looking at TDC fund first and then moving forward. Yes.
Yeah, I seconded it for discussion purposes, but as this county grows and as our TDC and our tourist effort, you know, our tourist population gets bigger and bigger, I think we need to look at this from a long-term perspective, much like Commissioner Bayes is suggesting on what, what was it before? Well, what should it be going forward? Does that not also open up the possibility of using park impact fees? If it's a whole new entity that wasn't what it was before?
If it's adding capacity?
Correct.
It's adding capacity.
Yeah.
But the, I, I think.
Because right now it's not even there, and I'm sure there is an expiration date on how long is something dead before you can bring it back with impact fees. So, you know.
I think Commissioner Canard's thoughts regarding the Manatee Protection Plan are well, well pointed out.
Would you say brilliant?
I, I would say brilliant. Two is enough. Brilliant.
I apologize.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
Yeah, I just had a, a question for Mr. or Commissioner Canard. Because when you look at this, it, I see what you want now. You want to build the pier.
Yes.
But on this, it looks like an oar. So my question was, when you decided that before, we run the board, a couple of us, did you think it was getting built? And then, so how did we just get railings up there? Because my question to staff at my briefing, it seems like for the $5,400, they want to add like a third row. I'm assuming that's for safety, but if it's fairly new, who assessed for that and why was it safe a year or so ago and not now? And then if we do build the pier, I guess we would need to assess like, you know, that, that it is meeting safety requirements. I don't know if you had any history on why it was done like that.
So what is your question? I'm sorry.
I think he understands. He was ready to.
No, but I would like to understand.
Oh, so my question is, I wanted to know if the board was thinking that the pier was going to be built first, and obviously it wasn't, but these railings were put up. But I'm questioning the oar, like the cost. They want to add a third row, but it's new. So if that's for safety standards, why wasn't it done correctly for safety?
Thank you. And that's a very good question. Thank you. Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, this, this project was handled, rather than a public discussion by the board, it was handled through a couple of emails. And the decision, decision was made by administration at that time that this pier was unsafe, it was going away. And we're going to be putting up these handrails where the pier was being taken down. And I guess the, the assumption was this was a temporary situation while the pier is being rebuilt. Now, the way that I understand it is that that there needs to be additional hand railings there if it's going to remain the way that it is. If the pier is going to be rebuilt, I'm not clear as to whether or not those additional hand railings need to be put there. So I specifically did not say anything about that, that B in my agenda item. If that's something we need greater clarity on to bring back and say, we're gonna need these, these additional handrails regardless, then let's go ahead and do them. But if there's something that we're going to take out when this new pier is built, I don't, I don't think that it makes sense to spend the $5,400.
Yes, I would agree.
Thank you, and I appreciate that question because I was on the board at that time and I did not realize that the pier was going to be taken down. I thought there was gonna be handrails to stop, stop it for safety reasons, and then it would be brought forward at a later date to discuss. And it was, seemed to have been just bypassed us completely. So, thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Canard, a second by Commissioner Bayes. Is there any public comment on this item L1A? Seeing none. Is there any further board discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and we're for the direct staff to look at replacement or permitting of the pier and looking at TDC money, correct?
Well, I would say not, not looking at, at replacing the pier. I want to direct staff that we're going to replace the pier. We want to look at what, if there are any docking options available or mooring options available there in the, in the construction of the new pier. And also to look first to TDC funds. Are there, are there TDC funds that we can use to, to construct this? Is TDC, would the TDC board be, be on board with this? I don't, I don't want to just look beyond them. I would like to have them on board with it. But that, that would be where I'd want to look to first to, to fund this, to fund this project.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bayes, you're in agreement with that, with your second?
I am.
And Madam Deputy Clerk, you've got the motion. So that being said, board all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. And now L2, we're gonna squeeze that in before 4 o'clock. Commissioner Canard?
I will, I will get through this just as quickly as possible. Mr. Grant, when he got up there and spoke, and as this board is well aware, as we talked about at our, at our retreat, this issue has been talked and talked and talked to death. What I've heard too many times is that there's not been clarity by the board. The board direction has been maybe this, maybe this. So that was why I wanted to modify my agenda item today to give very clear direction that this board is ready to move forward with the two, funding the $2 million for increased services in behavioral healthcare at this new facility. Hernando County is ready to do this. They're waiting, they're waiting for us to commit to it. Uh, Hernando County is ready to do this. They're waiting, uh, they're waiting for us to commit to it. Uh, when we commit to it, uh, they're going to be right there. I would love to hear that the hospital board, uh, will be there with us. Uh, but we cannot, I hope we do not wait on, um, another reason, another possibility, another idea, another. We have been doing, uh, I've got an idea. Let's talk about this. Let's meet some more. And this, this isn't a criticism. I, I love hearing this. But it's time to take action. It's time for this board to say, we are prepared to make this happen. We've got a private entity, entity in Livestream who's prepared to put, uh, real skin in the game. Uh, but they want to see that the communities are committed. And right now, the only ones committed to this is Hernando County. Hernando County has said, either you guys are gonna jump in and do this up there in your county, or we're out, we're out. We're gonna do it in our own county. If we, um, if we commit, they are prepared to partner with us and this thing can finally get moving. That's why I put down here, um, uh, three different parts to my motion that I am prepared to make. Uh, part A is discussion and vote on Citrus County providing two million dollars, uh, currently budgeted to Livestream for the express purpose of operating a new Baker Act facility in Citrus County. Such a facility will provide for much-needed behavioral healthcare services in Citrus County, which are, which are being provided, if available, outside the county now. This would include, but not limited to, a full-time psychiatric physician. Part B is direct staff to bring back a final contract for BOCC approval at our February twenty-eighth meeting. And part C is direct county administrator to communicate in letter form to Livestream representatives and the Hernando County Administrator his full and unwavering support for this partnership and the funded project. It's time to make a statement and get this ball rolling. We have talked this thing to death. So that is my motion, uh, this L two, A, B, and C. I hope there will be a second, and I hope we can support this unanimously.
I will second, and I have some discussion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, I see L two discussion on funding for a new Baker Act facility. I don't see the A.
We had an update.
We had an update.
We modified it at the beginning of the agenda.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry. It seemed so long ago. Thank you. Okay, yes, so I'm, there we go. Um, okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. On board, any thoughts? Oh, yes ma'am, thank you.
I'm ready. Also, I think it's time for us to move forward. That's why I asked Mr. Grant about how much money. I'm not sure of the, the final dollar sign. And maybe if you were upward at the nine million dollars plus two plus two, I don't know if that gets us there or not. I mean, that, that's definitely something, um, something to entertain. I think as a county, we need to get on board with this two million dollars, however we do it. Now, if we do it for services, um, I'm okay with that too, because we can put in our contract. We can still, just as if it was a facilities contract, you know, we're negotiating for twenty years. If Livestream backs out, um, at any point in time, they would owe us a, a, a portion of that money back. So you can, we can do the contract with, uh, with services as we could facilities. I mean, in saying that, um, if we owned the building, if the hospital board gave the money to the county, and it was the full amount, and we didn't have to borrow money, and Livestream wasn't putting in any money, um, and they could pay us a, a, a good bit for some rent that would take care of our building. So, um, to, to Commissioner Kennard's point, I, I'm tired of it. This can be kicked down the road too. So if something doesn't happen, happen quickly, I think that we should commit this two million dollars to the services and put a contract in that. Um, I think either way, we need to commit the money today.
I have a question for you first.
Yes.
Please. Um, if we commit this money to Livestream today, we still don't have a building. So I don't understand the rush for committing today for that. I believe this is important, but if we've got a presentation today, and I think that we should commit two million dollars to a Baker Act facility in Citrus County.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, you, you said that you had a question for me.
My question is, if we commit today, are we gonna have a building? When are we gonna have a building?
When we commit the two million dollars, when this board finally commits to the two million dollars, it's already funded. Hernando County will follow. Hernando County will file suit. They will, they will then commit the two million dollars. They're, they are ready to do this, um, either here or down there. But they're tired of waiting on us. Once that four million dollars is committed, Livestream's board is prepared to move forward, uh, and construct this building. Then they will go down this road. But so far, what they've heard is a lot of talk up here. Now, I'm not saying by this board, but what they've heard is a lot of talk, a lot of promises, too many meetings, a lot of back and forth. They took action and bought the center's old building. That has enough property there for them to construct, um, not only a Baker Act facility, but it is, it is a mental and behavioral healthcare campus for the continuum of care like Commissioner Bays was talking about. Not just people in the acute situation, but where they can come in on an ongoing basis. Or people that are just there for, uh, uh, care on one particular day or another day. The money that the trustees have is, is due to a tremendous effort that they have made, uh, in lawsuits and fighting back lawsuits and seeking additional funds. So tremendous props to them. But that money can be used, um, for services, or it can be used for other stuff. You know, we, we heard earlier that they spent six million dollars, uh, out at the, um, uh, out at the college to expand the nursing program out there. The money can be used for a lot of different things without the county actually owning the building and responsible for the maintenance of the building and not collecting any taxes on the building. There are a lot of reasons for us to not own that building. And front and center is you've got, you've got a private entity who's prepared to take out a loan and build the building. They're looking for us to make a commitment to two million dollars on the services.
Okay, so, explain to me why you're saying Livestream, and I know this, bought the center's building.
Yes.
Why is, why hasn't Hernando County written a check to Livestream then? Because if they have the building and they're ready for the services, why hasn't anything been done? Why is our two million dollars the, the catalyst to get the, them moving on actually having a building? And having a, a facility?
Why would a county send two million dollars to another county for, uh, uh, commitment of building this facility? If the county where we're talking about it being built isn't committed to it?
Well, it's for services.
Right. But whatever it's for, why would they send, why would they commit that? If they're gonna spend two million dollars, but we're not committed to it, they'll just do facility down in their own county.
Has Livestream opened that facility and done anything to that building since they bought it?
Centers? I don't know. That I don't know.
Board? Commissioner Davis?
Um, I have a point of clarification, and, um, I agree that we need to move on this, Commissioner Kennard. But it says two million currently budgeted to Livestream.
Yes.
So is it currently in the budget, or are we having to pick from one of these funding options?
I would have to go back and is that a question, is that directed at me?
You or staff, one or the other.
Well, I, I'll be happy to answer it. I would have to go back and, uh, and watch the meeting. Uh, Randy had told us, uh, I don't recall if, if the two of you were on the board or if it was before then. Uh, Randy had told us at the time that that two million dollars was budgeted. Part of it came from the Duke Special Funds, and I don't recall, um, where the other was. It might be, uh, that first option, but I would have, to be certain, I would have to go back and look at it. But I know that we, we budgeted that money. We earmarked that money specifically so that there was two million dollars there, uh, for this, for the, for this, uh, initiative also.
Cause I, I wanna, I wanna be clear that I understand that this job involves some really tough choices. And we have a lot of things on our to-do list and limited funds in which to do them with, right?
Correct.
That being said, I am not at all in favor of robbing from economic development funds, for example. And if we pull from constitutional officer renovation, that's just more of the short-term thinking that we just talked about at the retreat, that we need to be saving up for these things so they don't come in like a major whammy. So, um, I am absolutely in favor of, I really want to do the two million, and I wanna do it today. I would love to know if it's actually budgeted other than this.
Madam Chair?
Um, Commissioner, Commissioner Bays was first. Go ahead, Commissioner. Then we'll get, we'll get to you.
I'm a little confused. One, we're talking about services. We already have a contract for services. Can anybody identify what the contract for services currently represent?
Madam Attorney?
I can. You currently have, uh, I'm sorry, I'm still fighting this cold. You currently have a contract with them where you, uh, committed nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifteen cents for a continuum of integrated and comprehensive substance abuse and mental health services for the residents of Citrus County regardless of their ability to pay for such.
And that's it?
And that's it. Um, as, as you know, I was directed to engage in discussions with the lawyer from Hernando County and the lawyer for Livestream. And I have been in communications with them every week since I was directed to do that, except for, uh, some, some of us have been sick on different occasions. Uh, one of us had a, a death in the family, and then we had some holidays. But other than that, we have been meeting diligently, uh, trying to hammer out some documents. Um, in my discussions, since I was directed to have those meetings, I have told the lawyers for both Livestream and Hernando County that we were committed for two million dollars. Now, maybe I was speaking out of turn, but that was what I understood this board's direction to have been. So I, I believe that Hernando County knows that we're committed, and I believe that Livestream knows that we're committed. It's just a matter of trying to hammer out these documents. Um, as you know, Hernando County has committed ARPA funds. And as you also know, ARPA funds have to be committed by December of two thousand and twenty-four, and they have to be spent by two thousand and twenty-six. At the rate that Livestream is proposing, I did learn Friday, for the first time at the Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting, that they have drawings for this facility, that the architect is on the sixth draft of these documents for this facility. Um, I've never been provided those, uh, you know, anything about the drafts or, I've never seen them. But I did learn at the, at the meeting on Friday with the Commissioner Bays, that they have the facility drawn. So, um, I also learned a lot about the services that are being provided currently, uh, and what services intend to be provided. So I had been looking forward to my conversation this Thursday with the two lawyers, uh, so that I could use the knowledge that I learned at the Friday meeting to continue to work on the drafts that we're already working on.
Did I get to you, Commissioner Finnegan? Go ahead.
Just to Commissioner Davis's point, I did ask the question about the money for the constitutional officers. And by staff, I was told it wasn't needed this year, so we could use that money. So that's, I feel like that's a pretty good spot to take it from.
Commissioner Bays?
One of the other things in here, it says, this would include, but not limited to, a full-time psychiatric physician. And in our public safety meeting on Friday, um, they currently don't provide any kind of psychiatric care or follow-up, in-person follow-up care for the services that they're currently delivering. And we were told by Ms. Lisa that's here, that, um, they can't recruit anybody in Citrus County. That, that there is a problem hiring people. We currently have one psych psychiatrist in our county that is retiring. So I'm a little confused why we're rushing to the table if we don't have the personnel to deliver services, number one. Number two, if we don't have a psychiatrist. I don't know what building a building and being in a rush to build a building if we don't have service providers. And that's a concern of mine. And I, and again, I'm gonna go back to this, and I'm, I mean, I've got piles and piles and piles of research that I've done, and I can show it to you over and over and over. In fact, I talked to Mrs. Debbie Savage this morning about, um, people with dementia being Baker acted. And it's a problem. I mean, would you want, you're dealing with it, you all have dealt with it. Would you want your loved one that has dementia to be Baker acted? It has severe consequences, and we're using it, and there's a lot of money to be made. Let's just be clear. Follow the money.
Please.
I mean, this is.
Please, not.
We have got to be very serious about this, and I, and I'm all for having a Baker Act facility. But we have got to do it right. We cannot use it as a tool to, to involuntarily put people in or say that they need Baker Act services when they don't. We've got people Baker acting their children because they don't wanna take care of them. They're there for a weekend. Statistics show you that Monday through Wednesday, people get money that if they're on drugs and they spend it down when they don't have a place to lay their head and a roof to put over their head and food to eat. They voluntarily commit themselves. I'm for having a Baker Act facility, but I'm also fine, I'm ready to do real business, real business. That says we are going to help the people, citizens, citizens of Citrus County and have a plan of action. If you are Baker acted, that you come out, that there's a continuance of a care, or we're gonna get them into a treatment facility that actually helps them. But just arbitrarily Baker acting all these people, and I, I mean, the numbers are off the charts. And I can tell you, there was a facility, and it was done by a former NFL player just south of here, got into the business of this type facility, and they started investigating him because it was the only one that's turning a profit. And there, and, and it was a seventeen million dollar profit in one year. I'm telling you, this is not what it's cracked up to be. We're, we're looking at something that we really need to find a managed care program. I'm not saying we don't need a Baker Act facility, but what we need is we need to be able to treat these people when they come out. So when we turn them, when they come out of that facility, they have a place to get the care and a, and a continuing program. And I, I, I think being in control of our own destiny and, and taking the sale of the proceeds from a hospital that were taxpayer dollars and having our own treatment facility and knowing who we're going to deal with, that we have, we control our destiny. We're not at the, at the mercy of another corp, and it is a corporation, by the way. It is a sixty million dollar a year corporation. And we need to be at, we need to decide who's gonna deliver these services and how they're going to be delivered. It's our citizens. It's Citrus County. We should be proud. We should speak up. It's time to take control and figure out what the issues are. You know, and maybe you don't like the coined term, but I don't know. Maybe we start to do things different in Citrus County, and we just don't fall into the trap of doing what's being done across the state. Because whatever we're doing across the state, it's not working.
Are you done?
I am done.
Thank you.
And I'm passionate.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Not mad.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yes, thank you. And, uh, uh, something that Commissioner, uh, Bays alluded to is exactly right. We don't need to build a Baker Act facility. There, there are experts in this field that are prepared to do it. What we have been told before we switched providers from the centers, uh, to Livestream, the center sat right up here and said, we can't do it. We cannot do this unless you are prepared to put money into this. Unless you're prepared to put real money into it, it doesn't make sense for us to do it. And she was also correct when she said that just doing the Baker Act facility doesn't. doing the Baker Act facility doesn't solve the problems. You, you're exactly right. That there needs to be this continuing, continuum of care. And that is precisely what Livestream has proposed. Uh, that, uh, that they are prepared to handle the acute cases, the ongoing care, the ongoing consultation, uh, that these people need. And that's the business that they're in. What we want are those services provided. We are light years ahead in, um, uh, behavioral, mental health care in the county from where we were not too long ago when the centers was running things. The board at that time took action and made a change. Um, are we where we need to be? Absolutely not. But make no mistake, we're in no rush to get this thing across the line. We've been talking about it since January of two thousand seventeen. We're not, we're in no rush. It's six years. We can continue to kick this can down the road. What I've asked for today is stuff that the board has already agreed on. As you heard the county attorney say, the board has already said that we were committed to two million dollars. All, all that I'm asking is that we put a timeline on it. It's time to bring a final contract to this board for us for our approval. And it's time to, uh, I would like to see, uh, the county administrator tell in no uncertain terms, Hernando County, we're committed to this project. They've already said they're committed to spending two million dollars on it. It's time for us to say we're committed, we're equally committed.
But Commissioner Kennard, we have said that the previous board has made that commitment.
Made the two million dollar commitment.
Yes.
That's, so I'm putting this all in one agenda item that this is, this is our commitment uh, for these services. I want to see a final contract come to us by our next meeting. And I want to make it crystal clear to the Hernando County Administrator because apparently there is some concern, obviously so, about this board being committed to this initiative. We've talked it for six years. If we want to talk it for another six years, I won't be here at that point. But it's time, it's time to say, this is what we are going to do.
I appreciate what you're saying. I, but I feel like this, I, I also sat on the public safety and there are some issues. And you've been privy to meetings with Livestream, but we as a board have not. And I'd like to hear what they have to say because they are providing a service now. And how well are, are they meeting the metrics? How well are they doing? And, you know, the previous board did make the commitment of two million. You got me there with the services. I was always against it. But I felt this need, this, this, that we had to get this done. But as far as I know, I, I have questions for Livestream and I, I just can't, today, I am, I'm not gonna support this until I get some of these answers done. We got a presentation today. I think that we really need to have a, a, a really hard discussion and not in a year, in, in a month. I mean, we need to get, I need some answers because I don't think that if they're not meeting the metrics, how do I even know that they're doing a great job? Because we get emails and I sat on public safety and there was a lot of discussion. And luckily Lisa came, came to the meetings and she would address it. But, I mean, there were some hard questions being asked. And I don't know what the answers are. So I, I just, I, I have, um, I just don't feel good about this right now, especially with that presentation today. I don't, I don't know. Yes.
Madam Chair.
Um, Commissioner Davis, then I'll go to you.
Just to be, to bring this into a practical framework, number one, Livestream, I believe it was Livestream, that's, has already done architectural renderings. Is that what you said, Madam Attorney?
I have not heard that from their lawyer or Mr. Cherry or Mr. Hinky, but we did hear it at the public safety meeting um, by doctor and I'm sorry, I know her last name starts with a W, but I can't. Willston.
It, to make sure that when we are putting forward two million dollars, that there's an actual practical outcome to this, that we enhance our services in Citrus County, which is what we're getting at. Number one, we need to have, as I'm fond of calling a swamp math, or in other words, highly approximate amount of money that it'll cost to build the facility. And then we need to ask Livestream if four million is enough because I believe they were counting on two, two, and something from the hospital board and the hospital board is not going to put any money in unless we own it. So then that becomes a fork in the road, okay? If it's going to cost X dollars to build this swamp math, then it becomes the hospital board question, can you fund the balance over four million? And if they, you know, when the question goes to Livestream, can you build it yourself with just four million? Because there's, there's a big fork in the road there, guys. And that we need to be practical about this.
Commissioner Kennard, I'm gonna let Commissioner Finnegan go so that you can get all our answers, all our questions.
To address a few things, um, that Commissioner Bayes had said first, um, I understand the same. And coming from that, um, background of helping people, when there's not a facility, it's very difficult for the citizens of Citrus County. They end up in all the wrong places. They end up in shelters. They end up at the hospital. They end up in jail. They end up dead. So, um, and coming also from that background, when you open your doors for good, the bad comes in. Any, anyone can tell you that people use and abuse the hospital, they use and abuse our shelters. And, and probably if we have a Baker Act facility, that, that'll be the same. But we can't not do things because of, you know, a few bad actors that are just trying to, you know, beat the system. For the hospital board and to Commissioner Kennard, we gotta get this thing pushed through. We, we can't talk about it for another six years and we needed it before the conversation of the six years. I don't, I don't know what support we're getting. So I don't know how quickly because Mr. Grant said that they're ready to move. I think if their figure was a two million dollar figure, I don't think they get to be the driving force and, and the decisions that we're making. And I feel like if they give the two million dollars to the county and we, um, had a service contract, we could also redeem that money if anything happened within the twenty years. We could get that back and maybe first rate to buy. I am interested if they want to put in much more money, whatever Livestream would come back and say, hey, this facility is gonna cost X amount of dollars. And then we have the two, the two from the counties, four million. And the hospital board says, hey, we want to give the balance to the county. I think that would be more palatable to the board. My suggestion would be though, to get everybody to the table within the next thirty days. So I think you said our next meeting's three weeks? Not two weeks? So three weeks. Um, so somehow we need to have a conversation with Livestream and the hospital board. And I'm not sure if everyone could get to the table because I know you said you had a lot of questions. But we can't put this off months. And I don't know how Commissioner Kennard feels about that. I'm, I'm ready also. Let's move this forward. But we need to get some consensus, I think, to do so.
I just want to add one thing because you've brought it up. Livestream has a building. What, what is the holdup? Why haven't they come to us and said, why is our two million holding up their building? They're a private sector business. Our two million is not going to hold up their building.
I can answer that, I think. Just if, if Commissioner Kennard allows.
Yes.
Really? All right. I want to talk a little bit, a little bit about history. The history of this money that the hospital board is hanging, is sitting on, this pot of money that they have. And this is for maybe some of us up here or the folks at home watching this and saying, you got this board saying they've got this money ready to do this and build a facility and give it to you. Many years ago, when, uh, Citrus Memorial Hospital was a nonprofit, the city of Inverness ma- made notice to the county that they intended on annexing it. Annexing the hospital property. It, uh, either was lost on the desk of administration of legal at that time, not current legal, uh, or the board of county commissioners, or maybe all entities. But nobody opposed this annexation. At the time, at the time, the hospital was nonprofit. So there was no taxing on it, no ad valorem taxes on it. The city of Inverness annexed a property, quickly moved to include it into their CRA. And what that meant was that the county would never realize any increased property taxes from that hospital, uh, building. But that all new, uh, taxes, uh, on that building would go to the city of Inverness. Uh, it was a very, very shrewd business move, uh, financial move on the former city manager, uh, of Inverness. Very shrewd move on his part, um, to corral that money at that time. And up to several years ago, it was estimated to be about a quarter of a million dollars a year out of the county coffers and into the city. The city manager then quickly, there were whispers in Tallahassee that CRAs were going to be done away with, uh, that cities would not be able, able to do this unless those CRAs, the income, the revenue from those CRAs was bonded. So, um, uh, the former city manager wisely bonded all of that revenue very quickly for new projects downtown. I think Highlands Boulevard and, you know, the Depot District and all of that type of thing. What does this have to do with what we're talking about today? The trustees are, um, responsible for managing, uh, the lease of the properties of that former, um, nonprofit. Uh, the lease payments, uh, went to the trustees and then that money was flowing to the CCC, CF, four Cs and the F. The monies that were, that were going there, um, were, as I said, were monies that, um, uh, the trustees, uh, were awarded in lawsuits or saved and that sort of thing. Ultimately, the money that they're sitting on rightfully belongs to county residents. All county residents. That's where that money should have gone. The money that they're sitting on right now and the, uh, management of the lease should be going to the county. Should, all of it should be going to the county, um, for county purposes. And if that were to happen, uh, then you could use, if you wanted to use an additional two million dollars of that for services or four million or ten million or wherever you wanted to use it for. You could use it for any of the county projects that are out there. But the reality is, is that the previous hospital boards, um, or the, the trustees, um, approached the city of Inverness about taking over the management of the, of the prop, of the lease and the funds. City of Inverness wisely said no, uh, that they weren't going to do that. Then they approached the school board. Well, what, they, they approached these other boards, but never the county commission, where rightly should have gone a long time ago and it still should go to. This is money that should be in the county coffers and for us to be making these decisions about what to do with it. And if it were there today, we would easily be funding whatever part of this, um, this, uh, behavioral health campus that we wanted to and not, um, dependent on the hospital board that maybe those, they would step in and fund some or all of it. This project Commissioner, uh, Finnegan brought up, you know, what about if they do this? What about if they do this? Or maybe it was Commissioner Davis. This project is not dependent on the hospital board. I absolutely welcome their participation in it. But once Citrus County commits, Hernando County is gonna commit. I hope that the hospital board will commit, but if they don't, this project will move forward. Livestream will build a behavioral health campus, not just a Baker Act facility, um, here in our county, on that site where the centers is now located.
That being said, I would like to hear that from Livestream. I really would.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I can't speak for Livestream and this is going back in my head a long time since I've been in that building that the center's owned for history. I'm guessing they haven't put that facility there to answer your question. I'm thinking because it's not set right. It's very small. I think it was mostly offices. I, I don't know. I mean, that's not my industry, but I don't know that it would lend itself for that right now. I mean, there needs to be some other protections in place. So, I'm assuming that's why they haven't moved ahead and, and put that service there. But I can't speak for them.
Yeah, because it was presented. That's what they were gonna do. That's why they got it. Commissioner Bayes.
Can you, Madam Attorney, um, describe or explain how these type services are designed and rendered? I believe it, if I'm correct, it comes from the Florida Department of Family, Children and Families. Then they contract because there's seven different programs or, um, managing agencies that, that they contract throughout the state and then they subcontract. And what are, and, and then what is the county's legal responsibility by statute?
Well, I don't have a, a real command of the system. But basically what you said is correct. DCF has the funding and, uh, DCF partners with, um, in our region is Lutheran Services. And Lutheran Services actually contracts with Livestream, our provider. They previously contracted with the centers and if you recall, we were approached, uh, years ago and asked if we would, uh, well, it was stated the centers wasn't doing a good job and, and the board wrote a, a letter to Lutheran Services asking that we, uh, have a different provider. And then Lutheran, then, then they went out to bid, Lutheran Services did, and Livestream was awarded the contract. And that's kind of the, the rough, uh, explanation of how it all works. But we are responsible under the statute of matching and, um, that's what the nine hundred and, the nine hundred and some thousand dollars I told you about. It's nine hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. That's our county match. And remember, uh, Livestream went to the legislature and got a special appropriation. Our, we used to pay them, Erin can correct me, like for, for about five hundred thousand dollars is what we used to pay, uh, the centers and then Livestream. But last year, or maybe the year before, they went to the legislature and got a special appropriation to build a Baker Act facility in Citrus County and got, uh, an additional appropriation. So, um, I wasn't involved in the decision, but somehow there was a decision made that we would then, uh, match that legislative, uh, appropriation as well as the other. That's how it got up to nine hundred and some thousand dollars. Uh, that we're required to match. I don't know if we're required to match that second one. It's not something I ever looked into. But that was, the former administrator, uh, made that decision to match that. And so that's why it's so high. The nine hundred and something as compared to the four or five hundred that we used to pay. So that's kind of the, the scheme, the, the, the framework of it. I did write to, um, as, as you all have directed, I've been trying to get a contract together, uh, to bring back to you. Um, it's, it's just not been easy because there's three parties. And our agreement is going to look significantly different from the agreement that Hernando County does because Hernando County is using ARPA funds. Um, and so that's the problem of trying to get it all put together is trying to, to figure it out. So, uh, they told me to ask any questions that I had. They said to put my questions in writing and to send it off to them and they would answer. So I put some questions in writing. And I asked them, you know, of the twenty-three services that are, um, well, the fifteen services that are identified and plus the twenty-three new services, which ones are you currently providing in Citrus County? And which ones are you're going to provide when you get the new facility? And I was, the answer, uh, in an email that I got is that Livestream is currently providing all twenty-three of these services because those services are required to operate the Baker Act facility. It's just that they're It's just that they're providing them in Lake County, rather than in Citrus County. So when I'm trying to craft an agreement for the additional services that you all are paying 2 million dollars for, that's where I'm at right now, in trying to craft your agreement, is trying to identify the additional services that you're gonna get for the additional 2 million dollars.
So, ma'am.
Yes, Commissioner Bays.
So my other issue is, some people, they either don't have insurance, or they're on Medicaid, let's just say they don't have insurance. I guess my question is, and, and to me, it always goes back to the care. What, what are you going to do? Because I mean, after, we're putting so much emphasis on this Baker Act facility, but they go in for 72 hours. At the end of 72 hours, where do they go? What do they do? And that's, I, I, you know, that's my issue, is I'm looking at this, and I really wish that we had some program, or we had some alliance with Langley, which is our FQHC, that somehow we have a program that we put all these people together, so if, if they either get signed up for Medicaid services, or if they have an ability to pay, but it's on a sliding scale, if they don't have insurance, that we're able to, to help move them into a program that really is getting them the help that they need. Because a lot of times, that's why this goes on, left undone, is because they don't know where to go, they don't know what to do. I've had stories told to me, you know, they get Baker acted for 72 hours, they come out, they need some blood work and a prescription, and they don't have money for either. The blood work's 750 dollars, and the prescription's 600 dollars. And so if, you know, if we have this FQHC with Langley, why is it that we don't have some kind of a triage program in place that can help move these people around, and actually help them in the end? The 72 hours doesn't matter. You know, you're, you're gonna Baker Act children, they may not be able to get a job of their choosing for years. You Baker Act people with Alzheimer's or dementia, it may prevent them from being able to be placed into a facility because they have behavioral issues. So it's not an end-all, be-all, and I think I just, that, I just want to be on the record saying that, yes, is there a need? Yes, I don't think there is a need to rush to judgment to say, for Livestream to be able to deliver services, that we have to provide them this money to build a Baker Act facility, when we have, I haven't seen the actual true deliverables of what they're providing today. How are we getting, how are we getting over the goal line with them right now? What have, what assessments have we made? Tell me that they're doing everything right, and, and are we getting reports? How many people are we Baker acting out of this county? How many of them are re, are repetitive? There's just a lot of questions I have about this, and, and it, it could go on and on and on, but I just don't think that we need to rush down this road. I didn't sit on this board for whatever period of time this is. I didn't vote to make, to give them 2 million dollars, because to me, this, they have a contract, they have a contract through Lutheran Services, and at the state level, and they're getting paid a million dollars by us, they're getting paid something from the state level, and they're supposed to be defining and, and giving this level of services, once they come out of this Baker Act facility. And I'm gonna tell you by all accounts, I'm hearing a lot of chatter that what's being delivered is not the best. So I would like for this board to at least have the opportunity to come back next meeting, or the meeting after, whatever that looks like. But I would like to have a full list of what services they're delivering, outcomes, benchmarks, assessments, and, and just have a full understanding of what we're getting ourselves into, if, if this is the road we're gonna go down.
I'm gonna let you finish up, I just gonna, just say this, we have, we have done this, this is deja vu. We asked Lutheran Services for reports, I don't even know if this was the board when we did that. We've asked for metrics, there are a lot of questions, I'm, I'm probably gonna be on the losing end of this, but I'm not gonna support this today, because, like I said, it's deja vu. We asked Lutheran Services for actual benchmarks, and I don't know that we've ever gotten that. And I, there is a lot of chatter with, about Livestream. And, you know, it is a business, and we're paying for services, and if there's 23 areas that they need to meet, but it's being met in Lake County, do we know if it's being met in Citrus County? Have we gotten that answer? You know, and, and there's just a lot of questions, so again, I'm probably gonna be on the losing end of this, but as of today, I'm not, I'm not gonna support this until we get some answers from Livestream, or from Lutheran Services, and find out what's going on with their building. Because 2 million dollars, 4 million dollars is a drop in the bucket for a proper building, so I really don't know what the holdup is.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Finnegan, and we're gonna let, if you have something, then let Commissioner Kennard wrap this up.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I've got, I've got some answers to the stuff that, that Commissioner Bays brought up, if, if we want to address those.
I'll just throw my idea out there, and then you can carry on. I think that it would be nice if we get some of these answers from Livestream. I, I am willing, reluctantly willing, to vote in favor of it, but it's gonna be messy, and I may change my mind before the vote is called, just so you know. I think it would be, behoove us to get all five of us educated and on board by Livestream. And so I'm just gonna throw that out there, but, you know, six years, one more month, is not, is nothing. But I feel the same, or, I'm telling you, I feel the same urgency you do, I really do. So just know that.
Commissioner Finnegan.
I don't wanna step on Commissioner Kennard's, like, in front of you, so whatever.
Well, he's gonna wrap it up.
Okay, just, just real quick, I don't want us to get hung up on 72 hours, because Livestream, when someone's Baker acted, it's a mandatory 72 hours, but that person's not stabilized, and they still need care, they will stay at that facility and get the appropriate care. So that is part of the continuum of care, and that was always my understanding, that it would not just be a Baker Act facility, it would be a facility to, to initially care for them, but also a facility without being Baker acted, that, that would provide that continuum of care. And the concern that Madam Attorney has about the additional services, I, I don't know that the contract is for additional services, I think it's location of services. So it would be the location of services in Citrus County, starting on whatever date, I guess we get the services in Citrus County, and then my suggestion would be for the next 20 years, and if the 20 years didn't continue, then we go back to prorating, getting that money back. But I think it's more about location than additional. So Commissioner Kennard?
Well, are you running the meeting?
Oh. Thank you, thank you.
Um, yeah, still more questions, but Commissioner Kennard, tell me what you're thinking.
Okay, well, first, back to a comment that our county attorney made about Hernando County using ARPA funds. That's not of our concern. Hernando County will get their issues, contractual issues worked out. We need to get our contract on the board, or on the agenda for this board to vote on. Yes or no, it needs to be an up or down vote. If, if it's not going to be, if it's not going to happen at some point, somebody like Beverly Hills Pool, somebody needs to put a fork in it and say, we're done going down this road. At the end of 72 hours, Commissioner Bays brought up, where do they go? You know, right, you know, they, right now, they're going to Lake County, where Livestream has been in business, has been providing their behavioral health in Lake County for 40 years. We're not talking about a Johnny Come Lately organization. So right now, they're being Baker acted, or they're going to the facility over there. The additional funds that this board voted to give to Livestream was because they opened up a triage center right here in the county, to be able to take in those Baker Acts, to save the deputies from driving all the way to either up to Marion County, or over to Lake County, to Baker Act these people. You gotta, we had a full day of a deputy, every single day, transporting a Baker Act patients in, or out of the county, rather. Commissioner Bays brought up, brought up the question, why are we focused on a Baker Act facility? We're not. What we're focused on is a campus. We're focused on a behavioral health campus that has a Baker Act facility, but also has residential beds for people who need to stay there for ongoing care, or also facilities there to address people, to help people, to serve people, that don't need to stay there at all. It is not just, we're not just focused on a Baker Act facility, and I, I, you know, I hope that we can clear that up. Commissioner Bays brought up, how many of the Baker Act, how many people are we Baker acting out of this county? The answer's easy, all of them. All of them, because we've been talking about this for six years. We've been looking for ways to not do it, why it can't be done, for six years. Livestream's been in Lake County for 40 years, what will the funds be used for? Funds, we just heard that the county's, the, the one psychiatric physician in the county's retiring. Part of these funds that we're talking about, that the board's already agreed to fund, will help to fund the salary for a psychiatric physician to stay here. It is difficult to recruit physicians here, it's difficult to recruit healthcare providers here, but Livestream could do that, they need to know that we're on board. So I will leave it, I'll wrap it up at that. I hope that this board will pass it. I would love to see a unanimous support, and let's get this across the line.
I didn't get my answer about Lutheran Services getting us metrics and reports. I never got my answer about that.
With, with regard to one metric, I know that we continue to not get the reports that we're looking for. I don't believe that they have been paid the second portion of their contract for the transportation for quite some time, I don't know exactly how long, but they've not been paid for quite a while on the transportation issue, because that we're not getting the backup material. So I, that's the only one that I know of. But I'm also reminded that they are scheduled to, John Cherry is scheduled, and Mr. Hinky are scheduled to be here on March 14th to give you a presentation. That's already, that was already scheduled before today.
It was for their annual report of activities, so after today's discussion, they probably need to have some more answers, probably.
Okay, so at this time, then, I think, had a lot of board discussion, let's open this to the public, if anybody would like to make a public comment about item G2. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, L2.
I don't know which number I'm trying to make a public comment now, but...
L2, the Baker Act facility that we've just talked about for an hour? You would need to give your name, and where you live again.
Okay, my name's Gail Romidi, and I actually live out of my car, I have a 30-foot shed in Citrus County, and I use my dad's address. He's got maybe beginning of dementia, not so fun to wake up to, so I stay in there. Okay, but Livestream Behavioral Health, I had the displeasure of being sent there for three days after I made a police report about, after finding my first implant. I have implants, I'm actually an NIS, a non-investigative subject since 1973, military secret. So it's, I'm just learning about myself, and it's very scary. Anyhow, Livestream Behavioral Health did not keep me long enough to go in front of the judge, I've not been educated nuts, although I feel a little nutty. I, they are owned by a foreign nation. I think you need to note, their funding comes from a foreign nation. Advent Health has an international branch of Advent Health, and money is coming from a foreign nation, and I think that's reason enough not to fund behavioral, Livestream Behavioral Science, but do the research, read my document that I gave to you, do the research, we're in trouble, America's in trouble. The COVID shot had graphene in it. They gave a doctor in the state of Virginia graphene, a confidential immunity for giving, putting, injecting me with graphene. And so I, I have to wear this hat and wrap up in scarves, because I get these horrible migraines and congestion, and I can't think. It's very difficult to be me, and I'm terrified to be speaking in front of you, because I don't want to get locked up, I'm not nuts, I think y'all are a little nutty, frankly. So, I, I'd like to be on an ethics committee, I was, I was in college when I became homeless, after shattering my wrist. As a professional psychiatrist, it makes it very difficult, but they, the Central Florida on September 11th, 2019, put a civics literacy exemption on my academic record, I'd signed up to be a paralegal. So you couldn't imagine, the zooey two years of my life, and that I'm constantly chased by lunatics who are trying to calibrate my brain. This is, it's called demonstration monitoring evaluation, and it started in 1973, when they put time converters in my ears, by the World Health Organization. And then in 2009, when Obama added onto the STEM grants, Department of Transportation and Commerce, things got really nuts, 'cause everybody's chasing the money. Okay, so I'd like to, I want a seat at the table, I think I deserve a place, I think you need to hear from me more.
Thank you, thank you. And none of us are gonna lock you up, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
All right, good afternoon again, Sabrina Watson, La Canto, Florida. This is a different board than the board that originally had this discussion that I spoke at before, and I want to give kudos to Commissioner Bays for everything that she had to say today, it's very, it's very factual, what she had to say. And, but I do need to say that this, this conversation, with no disrespect intended, is a joke. And I'm gonna tell you why, 'cause when we had the really good conversation a long time back, Commissioner Schleba asked for reports and metrics and things that have never been met. The money was never intended for services, now we've got word salad going with that, that money was originally for a building. I don't remember this gentleman's name, but the hospital's made it clear, they're not gonna pony up 6 million dollars for a building that the county doesn't own, so now we're gonna pretend we got word salad and make it for services instead. We started out with a, the whole thing started out bad, we started out with a backdoor meeting in Hernando County that our own administrator wasn't even invited to. Then we've got the lack of accountability, the lacks of reports, we've got all kinds of hidden agendas going on, but William Grant, hospital board, so they wouldn't spend it. The Citizens Commission on Human Rights has filed against them, they're not a well-established, wonderful company, and it's disappointing that this county seems to continually accept organizations. If you're really crappy at something, but you're the only game in town, we hire you. That's what we do. Core Civic, Livestream, we hire you. Now with men, children's mental health checks, now we're gonna lock children up to be victims. I've talked to you, you guys received over 40 pages of material that I sent to you, with regard to this, a very specific company. Just wanna read real quickly, adverse media, this facility's been in the news numerous times for violent patient deaths, or sexual assault, patient on patient, or even staff on patient. They have a history of being a dangerous environment for patients, resulting in physical harm, threats from patient on patient violence, staff's sexual misconduct, as well, it has numerous reports of staff negligence, which lead to patient deaths. Now maybe, we do need mental health care, I'm not really sure, you know, we all got our own mental problems, but this, this is not, I don't think that this is the route at all. In 2016, they had a teenage girl that was groped by an adult male patient in the waiting room at Livestream Behavioral Center in Leesburg. The director of nursing didn't believe the girl until the videotape confirmed what had happened. Supposedly they're supplying us services in Lake County, but they're... Supposedly they're supplying us services in Lake County, but they're now getting $400,000 a year extra from us for services that they supply in Lake County. Sounds to me like they're already getting paid for that facility that they don't have. Just a quick reminder of the real history. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this? Thank you, ma'am. Please come to the podium. If anybody else would like to speak, you can line up so that we can get you in, in the queue. Thank you. Please give us your name and where you're from.
Yes, Nicole Joyner. I stay here in Inverness, 40 North Robin Hood Road.
Thank you.
The facility you guys are speaking of, I was recently myself Baker acted there. It was the most inhumane experience I have ever felt in my entire life. I was literally mounted by the staff in that facility and my face was smashed on a wooden bed frame in front of me with police in the room justifying these actions under a Baker Act. My constitutional rights were not even considered. Alternative care? I was in a ER in UF Leesburg begging to see a GI specialist for gallstones in a possible gallbladder removal and they felt the need to remove me from a medical facility where there are medications in a pharmacy that staff can check out and drag me on my knees by police force and brutality through the emergency room in front of other patients. When I was there for a medical crisis, I explained to them I have PTSD multiple times. This is not a new diagnosis for me. I've dealt with this since I was a child. However, here I am, three and a half hours away from where I grew up in Broward County, Florida, being treated as if I live in a third world country justified under something called a Baker Act. I say no to this facility because your neighbors, your family, your friends are going to get drugged through the ER just like me. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? I see none. Board, any further?
Are they coming or leaving?
Are you, are you coming? Do you want to speak? Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public comments at this time. Commissioner, any further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Canard.
Yeah, just, just to clarify and, you know, for, it's, it's easy, it's easy to come up, even, even by well-meaning folks to come up and throw stones without, without the background. Citrus County does not select our mental health care provider. Lutheran Services does. So it's not that they're the only game in town and then to bring Core Civic into it and the jail into it. This is a discussion about getting the ball rolling. This is not the final discussion on it, but this is a discussion on a first affirmative step to get this ball rolling. We're not going to stroke a check for $2 million and hand it to, to Livestream and go, here, I hope you do something. It's a commitment that here is what we are going to do. We are 100% committed to this project. Hernando County will get on board and then Livestream can get, can get their funding and get their, get their facility built. So just wanted to clear that up, that it's not that we just take the only game in town. We don't select this provider. Lutheran Services does. Feel badly for the last lady that got up here and spoke, but quite frankly, Livestream can't Baker Act anybody. That's law enforcement does that. Sounds like she was in shans with, with a medical emergency. Who knows what transpired, but they felt the need to call law enforcement to take her out of there. I'm sure it was humiliating, but that wasn't Livestream. That wasn't Citrus County Sheriff's Office. That was either Latwa County Sheriff's Office, Gainesville PD, or University of Florida PD that did those terrible things to her. Or what she has just, you know, her side of the events were terrible things. That is a distraction from what we're trying to accomplish here. I'm not asking this board to do anything more than affirm that we are ready to do this. That is what this vote is about. Again, I hope that this will pass and I would love to see it unanimously.
Anything else? Commissioner Davis.
I apparently am the swing vote on this, but I, under that description, that's the only reason I'd be voting for it today and I will support it under that because as you said, we're not stroking a check right now, but we do need to show that we're serious.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that, but didn't we already do this? I don't, that's what I don't get. We've already done this. We've committed the $2 million. So I, that's why I'm confused by what is this going to do for us?
What it's going to do is bring us a final, a final contract by our next meeting. Enough talking about it. We're going to put it, we're going to make it very clear to the public, to Livestream and to Hernando County that we are committed to the tune of $2 million for services. We are going to get a final contract in front of us by February 28th and our county administrator is going to communicate to the Hernando County Administrator his unwavering support. There's, there's nothing mysterious about it. It is, it is making it crystal clear that we are done chewing on this thing. It's time to act. It's time to get it going.
And I appreciate that and I'm, I love that you're bringing this forward, but again, the reason why I'm not, I'm not there is because we have asked for things and we never get them. So what is, oh, we're going to just commit and we're going to be crystal clear, but when we ask for metrics and we don't get them, so what is that telling us? That's why I'm having trouble. So, did you have something?
Can you please clarify? I know the vote that you, the prior board made, you gave $2 million as services. So are you doing $2 million towards a Baker Act facility? Are you doing additional $2 million as a one-time commitment for services? Can somebody please define that for me?
This is what I'm asking for is a $2 million one-time commitment for services.
So it has nothing to do with a Baker Act facility?
I wouldn't say it has nothing to do with a Baker Act facility. The services will be provided at a behavioral health campus on the existing site where the old Centers building is located, where Livestream will construct a campus there. Part of that campus will be a Baker Act facility. Part of that campus will be residential beds for continuum of care and part of that facility will be for day, for care, you know, I would guess subacute care, you would call it, for people that need to come and, and see their, see their psychiatrist or see their counselor.
Yes, ma'am.
So part of what, of what you've put on here too then is to have a full-time psychiatrist? Is that part of what you're requiring?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. That, that absolutely.
They have, they have to actually have a physical person in Citrus County?
Yes, 100%.
If I may.
I, if, if you all vote for this motion, I need some direction on what I'm supposed to put in this contract. Because I heard one commissioner say it's not really a fee for additional services, it's a fee for services provided in Citrus County. The last direction that I got from the board was that it was for additional services. So I want to make sure that that's still what I'm negotiating and what I'm going to bring back because if I have to bring this back by February 28th, I don't know how that's going to happen, but I'm, there'll be something, I guess. And then in addition to that, I need to know when are the services supposed to start? And I mean, we're, we're not, I don't know, I, I have no idea when this facility is supposed to be constructed, so I have no idea when they're going to have the psychiatrist here. I have no idea when the services are going to begin and are we going to pay them now? One of the problems with the contract is I have to try and decide when are we giving them the $2 million? Are we giving it to them in advance of getting the services? Or are we going to get, give them the $2 million after we get the services? What am I writing in the, in the contract? I, I need help with that.
This is exactly what we've been doing for six years. Putting one hurdle in front of another, in front of another, in front of another. We have thought of, we have thought of 2 million reasons why we can't do this. I'm tired of it. We can work this stuff out. If we want to, if we want to prolong the date for the contract until the, you know, until the first meeting in March, so that we can iron out those details, fine. I'm, I'm fine with prolonging that part of this until the first meeting in March. But it is time for this board to act and say, get it done.
Commissioner Canard. That's what I'm asking of you is I still want my answers, my questions answered and if they're coming on the 28th, why can't we table it and ask the hard questions and make a decision then? I mean, I know we're six years, we've only been on the board two years. They've been on four months, five months. Yes, what, what would one more month and then we could have a united board and actually have our questions? And I think they're hearing us. I've asked for things and I've never gotten it. I've asked for things at the Public Safety Board. I've never gotten it. So I'm just to just blindly trust them once again. Just answer my questions. Show me that this is, that they are meeting the terms of our contract and that we're getting what we need in Citrus County and that we will be getting it. That's all I'm asking of you. I, I want, I want this to work, but I, I told you from the beginning, I can't support this today because of how I feel.
Madam Chair, I understand that you can't support it and I'm sorry to hear that, but I've been hearing this for years.
Okay.
You've heard from Commissioner Finnegan, who has been involved with mental health care in our county for a long time. I have given you as many reasons to support this, having dealt with this issue since 2000, January of 2017. It was, it was stated as the primary objective in the, in the summit, the elected official summit, both cities, school board, the county commission, and we're still, you know, I, as I said earlier, you know, I told you that, that the, the delivery of healthcare services in our county has improved immensely since Livestream took over and that is the truth. We can, we can sit and, you know, and kill this thing with the death of a thousand wounds or we can take a very positive step forward. I will modify my motion to make it the part, part B to bring us a final contract by the first meeting in March, which I don't know exactly what that is.
Is that the same one? They're, they're going to be here on the 14th with their annual update.
Okay, well, let's make, let's change part B to March 14th. We will have a final contract for March, March 14th.
Madam Chair, with regard to that, may I have a majority of you, please tell me what date you want me to put in this contract for services to begin and what, what? I have no idea what time I'm supposed to put in the contract. I'll bring you a contract. Just tell me what you want in it.
She's looking for direction, Commissioner Canard.
That's an unreal, that's an unreasonable request because we have no earthly idea as supplies can be delivered, dealing with subcontract. We can't tell, we can't tell when our own projects are being done here, but there can be, I have no doubt that we can put something in that contract that services are to begin on the date of completion or whatever it might be. That's, that's the legal stuff.
The date of completion of the building?
But we can't.
I can do that.
We can do something like that. We can't come up with services need to begin on January 1st because, I mean, we've been waiting on a Barge Canal boat ramp for 130 years, it seems like. So we can't give them a specific, we can't put a specific date in the contract, but there's a way to handle that, that they don't get money for services until the, the building is complete or is fully staffed or however it might be. That's, I would leave that to the professionals.
So I don't, so we're not giving them the $2 million until, I just need, are we going to give them $2 million in advance so they can build the building or are we going to wait to give them the $2 million until they start providing the services? These are contract issues that the three lawyers have been trying to hammer out.
Madam Chair.
I'm already in line.
Oh, excuse me. You still have the floor, Commissioner Canard.
I would say those are questions that we can handle at the, on the 28th.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Commissioner Davis.
I still want to make sure that we are looking at this from a practical standpoint, okay? We have Livestream coming in. We had Bill Grant come in and say that they are ready, willing and able to be a partner. It sounds like it's a mixed bag up here on the board whether we prefer to own the facility or give them money for services. So there's still a lot of unanswered questions on that that might be able to be answered if we have the, have them come in on the 14th, have that perhaps a workshop with the hospital board and let's get this done, but get it done from a very practical standpoint where we know who is paying for what and for what services and everything else. So everybody's on the same page and we can stop talking about it.
Get what done?
And actually get it done.
Get what done, Commissioner Davis?
Get the, my understanding is the reason this whole thing started is that when people are, and this is the Baker Act word, they are being Baker acted outside the county and we are using a lot of resources to transport those people. It gets in the way of them healing because they're nowhere near their family and all these other issues. So we need a facility that is appropriate to provide those services inside Citrus County and a whole mental health campus is exactly what we need. How to fund that? Apparently Livestream is not able to do that on their own, to build it on their own. So they need us to help them with that financially, but because ownership has to be clear, we will code that as services, but the services agreement essentially brings the services home. Okay, they provide these services outside our county. That services fee is to relocate those services to inside the county is my understanding. And so that's what we're trying to get to, but it needs to be a very practical, there's several practical things that need to happen here to be able to write that contract. And one of them is, are we going to own the facility with the hospital board's help or are we going to stay on the current track of we give 2 million, Hernando gives 2 million and it's a services thing that we can walk it back if for any reason Lutheran Services stops having them be the provider? There's just so many practical things that need to happen and I think you're hearing a sense of urgency from all five of us to push mental health forward in this county and there is a sense of urgency for it.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Commissioner Davis's idea of a workshop might not be a bad idea because let the hospital board come and Livestream, because I think Livestream will clear up the issues of the continuum of care. That's what I have always heard and expected from them, that this will be a facility to, to help our citizens in the best way. To help Madam Attorney with direction, justice funding would come along. I agree with Commissioner Canard that we could just put, date of services begin, you know, when they get their CO in Citrus County, but if they needed the $2 million ahead of time, I wouldn't be opposed to drafting language that, you know, puts it as when ground breaks or permits are pulled in Citrus County, but that would be helpful if Livestream by March 14th would have some of those answers and we could, you know, we could work with them on the 2 million. I don't think we're stroking them a check right now, but certainly if they needed the money to further develop that building because they're going to need to know how much money they need to, whether they're getting a loan or finance it, they may need our money to put up for that. So I would be okay giving that commitment before completion of the building. Giving the money, giving the check.
The, the whole 2 million at once. I'm just asking, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I just think that you're the attorney and none of us up here are attorney, none of us up here are psychiatrists and we're going round and round and you just made, confirmed to me by saying, we need to get it done. This 2 million is for services. It is not for a building. So we're paying for services anyway. So Commissioner, Commissioner Bayes, this is ridiculous.
I, from my own sanity, no pun intended. I just want to clarify one thing. We pay for services already in Citrus County. The only thing that's outside of Citrus County is the Baker Act facility. So all these other things, they should already be doing in this county. The only thing we don't have is a Baker Act facility. So that's why I'm a little perplexed by all of this. We're talking about, we have to fund this, these additional services so that they can provide the services that they're already contracted to provide inside this community. But now we need to have a contract and give them another $2 million and build a Baker Act facility. I, I'm very confused about what, what we're really doing here, because we have a contract. They are supposed to be providing these services inside our county, outside of the Baker Act facility. That's the only other thing that they do. It, that's, and I did ask for some details, the devil in the details. I was already told, because they couldn't provide the details. They decided to write it off last year for the services. Services rendered. We'll just write those off. I'll probably get in trouble for saying that, but that's the truth. So therein lies the devil in the details. They can't identify the quality of services that what they charged, so they wrote the receivable off.
Madam Chair? I've got, I, I, I'm about, I'm about done with this. We've got Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Cannard, and then if you want to say your final things, but I think that we have beat this horse. So Commissioner Davis?
For six years.
Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Cannard, I really do think that this should be tabled. And we have, for a workshop, you have two new board members. Two of us could certainly use some reaffirmation and re, you know, um, recollection on some of the details. And you also have two new board members that need to be fully briefed on this, so, and it's going to keep coming up unless they get fully briefed on it. On future actions of the board in regards to this facility. So let's just get the education part for all of us, so we're all on the same page, and have a practical answer at the end of that workshop.
Well, we have a motion and second on the floor for this. Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah, Commissioner Bayes brought up that this is just re, repaying for services they're already supposed to be providing. They're not supposed to be providing the residential beds that they're going to provide here. They're not supposed to be providing a number of the continuum of care services that they will be providing. Um, right now, we have the, um, uh, the Triage Center, um, out in, uh, I don't know if that's La Canto or Beverly Hills, but out there on 491. Um, that is something new that required additional funding. And, you know, they, again, they are not contracted with the county. They are contracted with Lutheran Services. And just as, um, the, um, potential buyer for Betts Farm did not want to turn over the studies that he had to us, because then it becomes public record, he showed them to the county administrator, but they're not, they're not given to us that, so that others can see what's going on, what, you know, and what they might be willing to pay for. Uh, the same applies for Livestream. Uh, that Livestream is, um, uh, they are a, they are a private company that is contracted with Lutheran Services. Um, they should not be, um, required to turn over proprietary information that potentially they have other competitors, um, that could use their own materials against them to try and win this contract from Lutheran Services. Uh, so, you know, I mean, we can, again, we can find millions of ways to not do this.
Madam Attorney, do we not have a contract with Lutheran Services?
We have a contract with Livestream.
Or Livestream, I'm sorry. Livestream.
But Lutheran Services is the one who selected Livestream?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have anything further?
Uh, Commissioner Cannard pretty much wrapped that up. I was just to, to drive that home, the contract we have now is not providing services in Citrus County. They're providing services to Citrus County citizens, and the additional money was for that, um, that, to the help our deputies, which is saving money to our taxpayers and saving resources. So this is additional, plus the continuum of care would be added, which is sorely needed here. That's it. I'm done.
I, um, hopefully we'll bring this in for a landing, so the chair can call that when she comes back in. Um, Commissioner Cannard, would your motion preclude us from the two roads I have identified in terms of, one is we own it and one is Livestream owns it?
Ours, my, my motion is for the services. It does not relate to the building itself. It is $2 million, a one-time commitment of $2 million to fund services.
Right, but they could use it for the building, but with, this could flip to us owning the building if the hospital board, I don't want to completely shut that avenue off. I feel like we should explore both of those avenues, but the $2 million is the $2 million. Either way, I'm fine with it.
The, the $2 million that we're talking about is, is for services. It certainly, if the, if the hospital board wanted to provide funding for, or to Livestream for construction of their facility, they could certainly do that. Or, um, or if the hospital board wanted to, um, join us in, uh, funding services, they could do that as well. That would be, that would be up to the hospital board to do that. What I'm asking is for our board to commit to the $2 million for services and, uh, getting the final contract in front of us and getting, um, uh, our county administrator to commit to, uh, Livestream and the Hernando County Administrator, that we are committed to this project.
So can you go on, so will you just state unequivocally though, that your motion does not preclude us from owning the facility? Should events transpire to make that possible or advisable?
Does it preclude us from owning the facility? I don't, I don't think that it.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I think that's a legal question.
I think you all should see. I think you all should see the contract that I was provided to work from. And to Commissioner Finnegan's point, Commissioner Finnegan, uh, talked earlier, uh, and I've, we've talked before about an amortization if they lose the contract. So that language, uh, is in this alleged agreement for services. So it, it muddies those two concepts of services versus building, and it talks about, um, construction costs, and it talk, I mean, it's not a pure, uh, so I, I'd, I'd love to give it to you all, so you can look at it to see why it's, it's not as cut and dry as you're saying. And I believe that if you commit to the, to this contract that I've been working on, uh, the way it's been presented, you won't be able to have the building. I mean, it, it's, it is, this is not for a building. It's for services with some little formula for amortizing if they lose the contract in a certain number of years.
But we're not ratifying the contract today. We're only ratifying the $2 million.
But I'm being told to bring back a contract, so I need to know what I'm putting in the contract.
Right.
Okay. I think that we have gone round and round enough, and I'm gonna call the question, but Madam Deputy Clerk, I want a roll call vote, please.
Can we read the motion?
And could you read the motion?
Well, the initial motion was to approve L2, A, B, and C, and then the motion was modified to change the date on part B. And I want a clarification of that, because you said 28th, but the discussion has been the 14th.
Yes, uh, part B, as it's written, is February, uh, February 28th, and I said I would be willing to move that to the 14th.
Okay.
Um, if we want to give even a little bit more leeway, I would be willing to go to the second meeting in March, so that we've heard what Livestream has to say on the 14th, if that helps to further do the, handle the word crafting of the document, but no later than the last meeting in March.
But Madam Chair, uh, uh, the clerk doesn't have A, B, and C.
Yes, I did. L2, A, B, and C, then the motion was modified to change the date in part B to Ma- March 14th.
There is no L, A, B, and C on the agenda item.
The modified one does. We were given it for the meeting.
I said that at the very beginning, two, three days ago, uh, when we started this. I've said.
Six years ago when we started.
I said, luckily, you know, we've only been on the board two years, so you have to give us a little bit of a.
I understand.
My apology.
I understand.
It's not on color.
Um, sir, I do think that you need to just nail down your date, to be clear.
Nail down my date?
On B, for the clerk, correct?
Correct, and I also did not hear Finnegan with, in agreement with that.
The second meeting in March. Sounds like it should be March 28th. Is that correct?
Doug, when's March, the second meeting in March? There you go.
So we will have a final contract in front of us, um, on the March 28th meeting.
And that would be a voting action?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm willing to change my second to match his motion.
Thank you. Okay, so could you read the motion again? And I would ask for a roll call vote.
Yes, the motion was to approve item L2, A, B, and C, and then the motion was modified to change the date in part B to March 28, 2023.
Thank you. And we have a motion and a second. So Madam Deputy Clerk? Commissioner Cannard?
Aye.
Commissioner Finnegan?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayes?
Nay.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
And Commissioner Slippa?
Nay.
Don't bother me. Thank you. That passes 3-2. Congratulations.
Even though it was a split vote, thank you, board, for great discussion and ultimately helping to get this thing moving. We will get there.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Okay. We are now at Commissioner Holly Davis. Do you have anything you would like to say?
I have about a 10-minute speech I'd like to give, if you don't mind.
Please, I have to go to the restroom right now.
Kidding, nothing.
Thank you. I have nothing. Um, Commis-, County Attorney Denise Lynn, do you have anything?
I think I've said way too much today.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm gonna open it to the public for the final comments. Would anybody from the public like to speak? Please step forward. Seeing none, going once, going twice, closed, open to the public. We're at item R, upcoming meetings. Uh, we have a regular meeting February 28th, 2023, at 1:00 PM right here at the Citrus County Courthouse, room 100. We have a regular meeting March 14th. I guess I could look at this page, Commissioner Cannard. There's March 14th at 1:00 PM here, right here in room 100, and our last meeting in March is March 28th, 2023, at 1:00 PM right here. Um, we don't have any upcoming workshops or special meetings or public hearings, so it is my pleasure to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.